Good evening. Welcome to the City of Crescent City Council Meeting for December the 6th, 2010. And we've just come out of closed session and we will be returning to closed session after this regular session. I'd like to welcome everybody on this winter evening, those that are here in person and those that are watching via the live stream which people are doing these days. And we have a full agenda, so we're gonna have a full night of work. So, welcome. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
I'd be pleased to. Councilmember Shalang?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ania?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murray?
Here.
And Mayor Slert?
Here, thank you. Mr. Black, do you have anything to report out from the closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Very good, thank you. Madam Mayor Pro Tem Murray, would you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess just a couple of comments of note. I was pleased to receive a phone call this morning from our former mayor and councilman Herb Klaudner. And he sends his regards to the city. And it was nice to catch up with him. He's turning 86, he says, and doing good in his health. So, that was a nice report. He used to be our next-door neighbor. Also, I'd like to give out a quick shout-out to one of our dear residents, Mr. Jim Gibson, who's recovering from some serious medical conditions. And he's over in the Chico area, and I believe he's watching via the Internet. So, a salute and continued good progress to Jim Gibson. At this time, I'd like to address acknowledgements. And we have a proclamation supporting the designation of the 2nd Sunday in December 2010 as Worldwide Candle Lighting Day. And I've asked Mr. Ania if he would make this presentation of this proclamation.
I'll read this proclamation from here. That's all right. Where has every year in the United States nearly 150,000 infants, childrens, teens, and young adults die, and countless tens of thousands are stillborn or are miscarried? And where has we recognized that our children are our country's, our state's, and our city's most valuable resource? And where has the work of the local chapters of the Compassionate Friends provides a caring environment in which bereaved parents, siblings, and grandparents can work through their grief with the help of others traveling the same road? Where has the Compassionate Friends Worldwide Candle Lighting, the 2nd Sunday in December, has become a symbolic day when these children are remembered around the globe? And therefore being resolved, the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims the 2nd Sunday of December as Worldwide Candle Lighting Day. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to observe this day by lighting a candle for one hour at 7:00 PM the 2nd Sunday of December and support of bereaved families in the City of Crescent City and participate in other appropriate activities in remembrance of all their children who have died. In witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand on the 6th day of December 2010. And this is signed by Charles Slert, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ania. And this is gonna be presented to Mrs. Georgia Cockerham. And she's the chapter leader of the Compassionate Friends.
Thank you very much.
Great. Would you like to offer some words?
Thank you, yes. I do want to let you know that the Compassionate Friends, the Northwest Coast Chapter, which encompasses Crescent City all the way up through Port Orford, was started September of 2004. And since that date, we have held monthly meetings for family members in which one or more children have died. I'm happy to report that as of this past November, we not only hold our meetings in Brookings, but also now in Crescent City. And we have, again, a lot of people coming from areas around the coastal towns that we serve. And so, we're very grateful for this. Our candle lighting is the 2nd Sunday. It's December 12th. It's the only event we hold that is open to the public. And so, if anyone is interested, the candle lighting will be held in Brookings at the Calme Opsus School Grounds under Shelter 1. And it's from 6:45 to 8:30 on December the 12th. And again, thank you so much for your acknowledgement and your interest.
Very good. Would the council like to make any comments?
I'd just like to comment that my wife Beth and I have been members of the Compassionate Friends since 2005. And if you know anyone that has suffered the loss of a child, you ought to encourage them to come to the meetings. And the advisory board has two local residents on it, Pastor Carol from the Methodist Church a few blocks away, and also Richard Weir is a member of our advisory board.
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you for bringing that to our area. I know it's much needed. I can't imagine the loss of a child, so, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Georgia. I would like, at this time, to interject one additional gesture here. In the last three weeks or so, I've been overwhelmed with learning what being mayor is all about. Gives me a much greater appreciation for what Ms. Shalang did in her two-year tenure.
Oh.
So...
I felt like there was someone behind me.
So, on behalf of this council, we would like to acknowledge your efforts in behalf of our wonderful city.
Thank you very much.
Kelly?
That was quite the surprise. Well, welcome to the world of being mayor of the City of Crescent City. I can't say enough about how much I didn't realize, how much I actually did, until I didn't have to do it anymore. So, I've had a very peaceful, relaxing couple of weeks. And when I actually stopped at City Hall the other day, they told me they had just had you sign the first 300 housing checks and that you weren't thrilled about it. So, it's been an absolute honor to represent our city. And it'll be something that I will cherish for probably the rest of my life. I love this city and I love the people that live here, so, thank you.
And I wanted to personally salute you for your sacrifices and your leadership that you exhibited in a two-year tenure. A job well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Great, thank you. So, that will move into business. We're gonna do the consent calendar. And there's three items: the regular meeting minutes of November 15th, 2010; the warrant claims list for the period November 16th to December 6th, 2010; and the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending November 20th paid November 24th, 2010.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So, it carries, motion carries four to nothing? Okay, with that, we will adjourn the city council and move to the Crescent City Housing And, Madam Clerk, you'll note that the same directors and chair are here?
Yes, sir.
Very good. And, so, do we have public comment for the housing authority? Seeing none? Okay, we have a consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. And then, we'll have the housing directors' report.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm back. I don't have much to report, because I've only been back for a week, but it's really nice to be back and...
Did you bring pictures?
I didn't, not tonight. But next time I will.
You either have to bring the baby or bring the pictures.
Pictures would probably be easier.
So, tell us about the new addition to your family.
Her name is Cecilia, and she was born on September 10th. And I also have, we also have a son. So, it's, you know, kind of a new ballgame with two, instead of just one. But it's a lot of fun.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Any other questions from the council?
No.
Great. Mr. Butler, do you have any questions?
No, just a thanks to Susie Mendez, former longtime director, who came in and worked a few days and a few weeks helping us during the time when Megan was on her leave. So, thanks again for her to kind of being willing to interrupt her retirement to help us out with that.
Welcome back, Megan.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. We have no public hearing for the housing authority. Continuing business, there's none. New business, there's none. So, we'll adjourn and close the housing authority. And we'll move into the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And, Madam Clerk, we'll reflect that all the directors that were present previously are, and the chair are also present here. Is there any public comment for the redevelopment agency?
I'm Joan Bueller, President of Lighthouse Repertory Theater, and I'm resident of the city. I would like to appeal to the redevelopment agency to consider Lighthouse Repertory Theater in our building, renovation of our building on G Street, which is now a derelict building and ugly. We would like to remodel it and make it beautiful again and have it functional as a performing arts center. We're having problems now because our venue, Crescent Oak Theater, Crescent Oak Auditorium, is very, very busy. And we're having trouble booking our plays and our events there. But what we really would like to do, I think I have given you all a list of what the building exchange gave us. They went through with contractors and told us what it would cost to just do the non-theatrical work, to close the building, make it safe, make it up to ADA, put the electrical and the plumbing in. And the total cost on that was over $800,000. Now, what we would like to do, I know this is a five-year plan, but we're just in the planning stages and we need grant money. We would really like to be considered for any grant money that is available through the redevelopment agency, because we would be helping the downtown area greatly by bringing culture to the building, to the city, bringing people in, perhaps from other places, to visit our venues. And we have been very successful for the last 33 years. We've been consistently giving you good productions, so we would like to be really considered for that. And I'm at your mercy. If you have any questions, I'd like to answer them now.
Council, any questions?
I don't believe I got the list she's referring to.
Yeah, it's part of the public hearing.
Back part? Almost at the very end. Okay. He got my copy.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
No, I would just like to comment how wonderful the Lighthouse Repertory Theater is and that I wish you the best, and hopefully we can do something with this, because it would really bring a lot of people to our downtown.
Yes, it will. It would bring them downtown where you need attention to your downtown area. And hopefully, we can make it more of an artsy area for culture and...
And I think that theater would be used a lot more by other groups also.
The hope is that other people in the community would use it, because it would be a nice theater when we're finished.
Yes.
And it'll be open to the public to use for whatever...
It'll be a wonderful theater, and anyone out there that has any extra cash, you can give it to the LFPs.
Absolutely. I got my hand out. Thank you very much for your...
And I would say that the notion of supporting the arts and culture downtown is part, a big part of what will make downtown successful.
You're right, absolutely, because we have to bring the tourists in, and that's a good way to do it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joan.
For all your effort.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent calendar, which includes the regular meeting minutes of November 15th, 2010, and the warrant claim list for November 16th, 2010 through December 6th, 2010.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We need to pull the vote.
No, not on the consent calendar motion.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So, motion carries four to nothing? And then, the executive directors' report, at this time, we have none. Business items, we have none. We have a public hearing to receive comment, consider, and/or approve a five-year implementation plan for the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, thank you, Chair Slert, and members of the board. Tonight, we are asking the board to consider and approve the proposed five-year implementation plan for the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. You'll recall that back on October 18th, at the agency board's regular business meeting, we had a presentation at that time from Scott Davidson of Pacific Municipal Consultants, PMC. He gave us a pretty detailed PowerPoint of the five-year implementation plan, what it's all about, what it contains. We did include a hard copy of that PowerPoint for you as part of your agenda materials, as well as a copy of the five-year implementation plan itself. So, we probably will not go over that in extensive detail again this evening, but we're available to answer questions that you may have. What we've done since October 18th is go through the required notice, public noticing process. And some of you may have seen the big ads in the triplicate, or may have noticed the postings around town in different parts of the redevelopment agency project areas. That's all to put us in compliance with what state law requires in terms of public notice when you're going to implement or consider a five-year implementation plan. So, we're through that process now. We've complied with all of that. We're ready for the agency board to consider the plan. And the one thing I would mention, we already just heard from Joan Bueller. Joan had presented her information on the theater project. You also have in your agenda materials a couple of proposals from Barbara Burke. One of them having to do with a small arts colony in the downtown area, and the other having to do with a therapy pool. And those are both, all three of those projects are projects that would be eligible for redevelopment funding under the definitions of different proj, of the various types of projects that we can undertake in the five-year implementation plan as it is proposed. Staff is recommending at this time that the board not make specific decisions about funding specific projects. One of the goals of a implementation plan is to be specific enough to comply with the law and to give you some general guidelines to follow, but also to be general enough to allow flexibility for the agency board down the road, especially since you're dealing with a five-year time horizon, and a lot can change in terms of opportunities and economic conditions and so forth down the road. So, I've had a chance to talk to both Barbara and Joan over the last couple of weeks, and I think they're, I think they understand that, that they wanted to get their projects in front of the board, but they understand that there aren't specific funding decisions being made about their projects or any others tonight. I did want to mention that we have two representatives from Pacific Municipal Consultants here tonight. I think they're behind me, so I'll just have them either stand up or raise their hands. Jim Carney, who you met at the housing workshop on October 19th, and then Tyler Bridges, who is one of the young rising stars of PMC, is back there as well. And they're actually here not just for the meeting tonight, but they are working on the BLIGHT study and the project merger analysis that is part of the ongoing work that the agency board authorized back in June. So, they're up here to join us for tonight's meeting, but they're also in town to do some real live work on the tasks that they've been given. So, they're here. They may be called upon tonight for tonight, for this item or for the next item, if the agency board has questions. So, I think I'm going to leave it there again, rather than getting into a lot of detail, since Scott kind of covered that back in October. And I think, of course, board member Ania was not officially a board member at that time, but I think he was in the audience as a member of the public at that time. So, it's kind of an exciting moment, I think, to get this five-year plan completed and ready to go. And it really gives us the roadmap to start implementing specific projects and spending some money and getting this stuff going. So, it's an exciting milestone for us. We are recommending approval tonight, and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Council, questions? Ms. Murray?
It's pretty clear. I am excited about having a five-year plan and having some good guidelines for us to work with. I think it's very thorough.
Rod, could you go over the fiscal impact of the contract authorization?
Yeah, is it for the next item?
It's actually the next one.
Are we gonna take it separately?
Right.
I guess I would offer, we had the presentation, it was very thorough. And it's, you know, I think we've been working with the redevelopment agency for something like 17 years, if I'm not mistaken.
Actually, the project area one goes all the way back to just after the tsunami.
Yeah.
So, I think it's the more recent, RDA 2.
Yeah, RDA 2 was formed in '86 and may have been amended a couple of times since that time. But that's definitely a much newer one and a larger geographic area, larger part of the city.
Well, I can just say that I've been on the council now going into my fifth year. And since I've been on the council, the redevelopment agency hasn't been very active. We've provided, we've done some much-needed improvements with public-private partnerships. We've cleaned up the Square Deal Building area and the, what is now the Verizon Building, as well as the Front Street Plaza, with a private developer. So, and those were not grant funds. There was a low, very low-interest loan out of the redevelopment agency to that developer, but he made significant improvements in our downtown area. But, and we've also completed, helped to complete the implementation of the new pool. And so, I think we've done some great things, but we haven't really looked at the future and really utilized what our redevelopment agency can actually do for our area. And so, I'm really excited. I think this council has chosen to make redevelopment a priority in the next five years. And it's gonna mean a lot of work and a lot of changes for our area, and I'm really excited about it.
I think also the other thing that's important to note for the citizens is that the public input that we had at the workshops in the last two years are actually being implemented and being brought forward. So, it's turning the wishes and the ideas of the community into reality ultimately and setting the stage. You know, things like Front Street reconstruction and street improvements, infrastructure systems, downtown revitalization, public parking, hotel expansion, master plan for Beachfront Park, and so on. So, it is bringing forward the things that the community has indicated are their priorities and putting it, formalizing it in a plan that the state requires anyway.
It's very true. A lot of this is the work of the community's input. And a significant piece of that came from our town hall meetings, where we spent a lot of time discussing the issues that mean a lot to the residents that live here. And this council has been very proactive about taking that input and making things happen. And with Rod leading that team of employees, the most, I think, one of the most wonderful things that he has done that has been a whole new dimension for our city is taking our town hall meetings, creating a work plan, and then making that work plan a part of our employees' goals. And that, that's how they get evaluated, is on implementing their goals. And those goals have incorporated what this council set as priorities through those town hall meetings. And so, it's actually coming to fruition now, and it's really nice to see.
So, the implementation plan is our action plan for economic development. So, it has goals and objectives and how we can actually achieve something. Takes it the next step farther, further from a workshop to how we can actually achieve some economic development, because it has budgeting and everything else. So, it's very exciting. You guys did a great job, so thank you very much back there.
I would also salute PMC. I think they've been good listeners to this community, and I think that's why they excel at the smaller rural kinds of communities such as our community. I give an example, I get newspaper clippings from residents of Crescent City regarding things that other redevelopment agencies are doing, buying up land and making investments. And so, people are interested, and they've seen the success of redevelopment... And so people are interested and they've seen the success of redevelopment in other communities, and I would say that we're more than ripe for our turn and our time of redevelopment in Crescent City. I think I'll open up for a public comment at this time. Anybody that would like to address the issue of the five-year implementation plan? I guess everybody felt they did it at the workshops. Okay, saying no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion.
I would move to approve the five-year implementation plan for this RDA.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that's gonna require a poll vote?
Would you like a poll vote?
Yeah, please.
Director Schlong?
Yes.
Director Ania?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
And Director Slert?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries five, four to, four to zero. Okay, so next we're gonna move, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to new business in the redevelopment agency, and that is to consider and approve an amendment to the master services agreement with Pacific Municipal Consultants, PMC, to provide redevelopment consulting services to the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Chair Slert, Chair Slert, members of the agency board. This is kind of a logical follow-on to our last item, to begin to implement the five-year plan and to finish up some of the analysis then planning that was authorized by the board back in June. We're back before you tonight to ask for two additional appropriations, one of them to basically finish up the work that was started and authorized back in June by Pacific Municipal Consultants when we, when the agency board approved the master services agreement. The other appropriation would be to start turning PMC loose on some housing projects with our low moderate income housing funds and providing some funding to allow that to begin to happen. Back in June, like I say, the board authorized $40,000 of work and then suggested that I come back, that the director come back to the board, once we got to the point where we were nearing that $40,000 cap to see where everything stood and then to authorize any additional funding that was needed at that time. PMC has prepared a, kind of an update report, a status report, that's part of your agenda package, and it shows where each of the major projects, or each of the major tasks stands, and then outlines the funding requested for, needed for completion of the remaining tasks. And the funding that is still needed is a little under $7,067.30 to complete the project area merger task, and that is, of course, looking at whether it would benefit us to merge the two existing project areas into one, and what are the pros and cons of that, and then presenting all that to the agency board for decision. The biggest single amount is $15,300 in additional appropriations to complete the long-range financial planning. We've done some initial, you probably saw those of you that were able to take a thorough look at the five-year plan, there was some initial financial analysis, including even some quick looks at what a bond, potential bond issuance would be. This would take that to the next level and actually begin some detailed multi-year financial planning for the agency, and really get into more specifics as far as what would we be able to generate from a bond issue at this time? What should the timing of the bond be? Should we, for example, pay off, issue a bond that would pay off the agency's existing debt, like the pool loan, the loan from the water fund to project area one, that kind of thing? Or should we issue a bond that would just simply be project-focused right now and the proceeds would be used only for doing new projects? So they'll take a look at all of that detailed financial analysis and look at, for example, different assumptions about our assessed valuation in the project area. And that's a very important thing in this day and age. It used to be that California redevelopment agencies could always assume that property values were gonna go up a certain amount, and so you, you could assume that your assessed valuation growth was always gonna be there. That's not necessarily true in the world that we live in now. So they'll be looking at all of that in a detailed way, and that's for that $15,300 additional amount. They've identified just under $5,200, $5,180 for additional low moderate income housing fund issues. This task is about half-complete now, and this would be looking at some of the questions that came out of the agency board's workshop on October 19th on low and moderate income housing issues. This would be more of the planning and analysis part of the, the work. And then the appropriation I'm gonna talk about in just a minute would be actually going out and working on some, some specific housing projects in Crescent City. So those, those three amounts, the $67.30, the $15.30, and the $51.80, would basically finish up the task list that was discussed with the agency board back in June. Then I'm requesting an additional appropriation of funds in the amount of $42,615, which would be a pot that would be available to have PMC staff assistance for what we're calling project management work on specific low and moderate income housing fund, housing projects in Crescent City. We have, some of these have been discussed in closed sessions, some have been discussed in open session at the workshop. We have at least three to five, what I think are fairly realistic, doable, smaller-scale low and moderate income housing projects that are in different stages of development, proposals, planning. We also have a big-scale project, namely Delnor Point, which the board has taken action on earlier this year, which involves a major developer, and they're kind of waiting for their next round of low-income tax credit applications, which will not be until March 2011. So that's, I'm not even really factoring that into this equation right now. But we do have some of these smaller-scale projects that I think we should begin to move on. We have funds available, the agency board has, you know, indicated a desire to move forward on some of these. These are all locations where we would be improving properties that are now blighted or vacant. So I think we can benefit from moving forward and actually having some project management assistance that we don't have the in-house staff or expertise to work on now, but PMC does have the ability to help us out with that. And this would all be from the low and moderate income housing fund. I think we've talked about the fact we have over a million dollars currently available in that fund, even factoring in the state takeaway last year that we paid from the low and moderate income housing fund. That money that we paid the state through their takeaway process has to be repaid to the low and moderate income housing fund, so that money will be coming back in. So money's available, we have viable projects, and I think rather than kind of sitting around, you know, waiting for a time when we can hire in-house staff, I think we, it would benefit us to get some professional consulting assistance from PMC and get some of this stuff moving forward. So the request before you tonight is for both of those two allocations of money, one being $27,210, which would be a combination of regular redevelopment, redevelopment agency tax increment dollars and a little bit of low and moderate income housing fund money, no general fund money. And then the other would be an appropriation of $42,615, all of that being low and moderate income housing money, no general fund money, for additional services from PMC. And this would just be an amendment to their master services agreement. We're not really entering into any kind of a new agreement with them, it would be done under the umbrella of that agreement. Let me just say in closing, too, that we won't always have to have this kind of expenditure going on for professional services, I don't think, every year. I think we've been kind of behind the eight ball with all the transition that happened in the management staff and plant, city planner position and so forth. We got really to a point where we needed some outside assistance to come in and, and help us get it back up to speed, get the five-year plan done, get the financial planning done. I don't see us having to spend this kind of money for professional services every single year, but it has been extremely valuable to us, and I appreciate, and I know I've said this before, but I appreciate the board's willingness to allow us to have some outside support to get this stuff knocked out and get us back to square one. So our request is that you authorize those two appropriations and that you appropriate $42,615 from the reserves of the low and moderate income housing fund. That basically means that you're taking money out of the bank account and putting it into a real live budget line item for professional services to be used on some specific projects so we can begin to get stuff moving in the field on these low and moderate income projects. That concludes my report. Mr. Carney is available for questions as well, and he, Jim, and probably Jim and Scott will be the two of the people that would actually be working on some of these real live projects for us if the agency board chooses to authorize that this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Counsel, questions?
I have several.
Please.
Okay, so I'm gonna take $27,000 first and ask for you to tell me that, I was a little confused because it said that we authorize them to proceed on nine tasks under the current agreement, and five are finished, and yet we have to authorize additional money.
Right, because at the time when the original pricing came in, they were talking about a total project cost of over $60,000 to do all of that. There was reluctance, which I understand on the part of the agency board back in June, to just write a blank check for $60,000 plus. So I believe it was former Mayor Protam Burns said, let's authorize $40,000 at this time. This will get the implementation plan done, this will get some of the other things started. Come back, Mr. Butler, to us and ask for the additional amount that's necessary to finish things up.
So those, okay, and I, and I recall that, but I thought that that $40,000 covered all nine tasks.
Yeah, and I apologize if that wasn't made very clear, but yeah, their number has always been, which I appreciate about PMC, they've always been right in that $60,000 to $70,000 range to do everything that we ask them to do. We just only authorize 40 up front.
Okay. Second question regarding the $42,000, housing development and project management. They were very thorough with the work plan when we authorized the money previously. This just kind of gives an overall overview of project management, and I know that we have work to be done in that area, and we are severely behind the eight ball in our low-income housing projects. However, when we went down this road, we chose to outsource because we were going to save a significant amount of money rather than having a full-time planning position. And I just don't wanna see this get out of control to where we could have, you know, very capable full-time employee doing this work. So I guess I'm looking for you to kind of tell me that this is not gonna be, you know, $120,000 a year.
Sure, now that's a, those are both fair points. The one thing I, the one distinction I would make on the decision about the city planner position is that was, that salary was being paid 100% general fund, so the argument was, you know, by going to a part-time contract, planning staff will save, will have general fund savings, and that has proven to be true. This is all redevelopment money that we're talking about now.
Right.
But the point is still the same, that you always, whenever you go down the route of consultants, contract, you've gotta really keep an eye on the bottom line of the billable hours and.
Right, and I, and I have a feeling a big portion of this $42,000 is travel time and time here at the city, because all it talks about is project management kind of activities where they say they'll maybe here at city offices, but for what? You know, I wanna see what, what that work plan is to approve $42,000. I see it says two hotel development projects, but this council hasn't moved forward with any hotel development projects other than in concept, and permits have not been taken out, and I think that there's, that's kind of down the road.
Sure. One thing that you could do if it would raise the agency board's comfort level would be to pick an amount below the $40,000, you know, 20, 25, somewhere in that range, and authorize that at this point. And we can, that will give us an allocation that we can use to get things started on some of these housing projects, and then.
What, what can we do?
Develop a work plan.
What, what will that consist of?
It's gonna be everything from working with the potential developers of those projects on the financial aspects of the projects, the planning, kind of hand-holding the developers through the planning process, the permits, helping the agency board and staff. Decide what's an appropriate amount of agency assistance to give to a particular low and moderate income housing project. We don't really have the time in staff now to do that kind of detailed work. It might even be putting together a, let's say we had a couple of sites, let's say you wanted to group El Patio Hotel, Ninth and J, and we've actually been approached about, by the owner of the property at, it's Ninth and, forget if it's E or G, there's a corner lot there, E, about the possibility of some kind of affordable housing project at that site. Let's say that we wanted to group those projects together, or those locations together, and do a request for proposals from firms to come in and build on all three of those sites, or any one of the three. PMC could help us put together the RFP language, you know, that.
And I support that, and I think that they are very capable and would probably do a great job, but I don't see the plan. And we don't have those projects, we don't have the RFPs for them to, to walk through, so I just, I don't feel comfortable just approving an open-ended $42,000 expenditure and just.
Yeah, that's.
Without specific.
Well, I'm of a different mind, I, I don't wanna just piecemeal the contracts so that we have to keep on going back and giving them a little bit more money, and we do have potential housing projects right here for affordable housing, and you can't get an RFP until you have, like, interested parties that are willing to wanna do a project. So we have 76 affordable housing units potential on this, this graph right here, so I, I think that you can't get an RFP until somebody steps up to the plate and wants to do it, but it, $42,000 is not a whole big chunk of money to do this project right here.
To do what project? What is the project do you think they're gonna do?
They're putting together the analyses in order to get people to wanna come and do, do an RFP for us, so I, I'm, I don't think that we should pare it down so much that they can't even do, get it off, off the ground. I, I don't understand what you're saying here. I mean, how much, how do you know how much money to give them or not? I, I think that they're the experts here and that they've put together a tremendous implement, implementation plan, so I don't know how you.
The implementation plan for the RDA is different than this $42,000 low and moderate income fund?
As I understand it, they're, PMC is catching us up to where we should be, is that correct?
Yeah, it's a lot of what they're doing.
And after they catch us up, we are free to do whatever we want. As for, we can hire a planner if we wanted to, we can stay with PMC, we might consider going to the county and contracting with their planning after we catch up with our redevelopment plans. And that's why I understand what they're doing for us. They're catching us up so we're on an even keel for the future. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement.
I guess to add to that, I mean, certainly the RDA has been in a disarray substantially, has not been a priority, and I think it is clear that this council has been, clear that we're gonna be strong about redevelopment, and, Mr. Butler, you've brought that and championed it also. The, the last issue that we just approved was about the five-year plan. To me, this part is the, the money part, to do the feasibility and the assessments and basically to map out where and how we, as the redevelopment agency, should propose to spend or invest that money. So I think that's important, and, and I mean, all out, I think it looks like we're talking about what's been paid previously and what's being requested, something like $100,000, which is a lot of money. On, on the one hand, I think it's a situation where you have to spend some money to make some money, and, and we have a million dollars in that fund. And to me, if we're gonna be serious about redevelopment agency, it's time to move forward and to make it happen. serious about redevelopment agency, it's time to move forward and to make it happen.
I agree with you, but there's no plan for the forty-two thousand, and that's what I'm uncomfortable with.
Is there a chance that Jim could talk to that issue?
Sure, we can have Jim come up and talk about that. I can just say that there's nothing magical about the forty-two thousand. I asked Scott for some, you know, broad estimates of what he thought would take, given the three projects that I think are the most likely to move in the next twelve months, and it was based on that. So, but Jim can maybe enlighten us a little bit more on the specifics of what project management might mean.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Rod, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Kearney of PMC. Having worked on a number of housing projects on the low and mod fund, it takes some project management to represent the city, to work with potential developers, whether the city wants to issue an RFP, request for proposals for, say, a site, or work with specific developers who come to the city and say, "We have property. We'd like to build X number of units," and guide the developer through the process to make sure all the rules and regulations for redevelopment law are met, long-term affordability, doing the due diligence effort, which is checking the financial capability, viability of the developers, and also working with the developers maybe to leverage the city money to go after other funds so you can stretch the redevelopment dollars, maybe not just to one or two projects, but as Rod said, there may be three to five potential projects out there. And, you know, any given project could take roughly, what we estimated it was about twenty thousand dollars to guide a project through. We're talking a one, two, three million dollar project to represent the city, to make that project come into fruition. So it's taking it from, you know, a vacant site to a completed building and working with them to make sure you get the right mix of tenants and meet the income qualifications. There's a whole range of activities in there. And so that's, that's really what it is. At this point, the reason we don't have a specific plan is there are three to five potential projects, so any one of them may have a different path, a different set of circumstances to work with to make that project come to, you know, be on the ground and actually get built and occupied. So that, you know, there are a range of specific activities. We'd be happy to give you a, maybe more of a typical type of projects, but, you know, right now, we're still in the formative stage of identifying, well, we know what the three to five are and where the sites are. It's just making those specific projects more real with coming into the city with an application, working with. And it's really a team effort. I mean, we're just one piece to help the city, guide the city, work with planning staff, work with the city attorney, work with the community, work with the developers and so forth. So the, I mean, and it really isn't the travel costs, it's being onsite and doing that day-to-day activity to keep the project moving and keep it alive, because it just takes a lot of monitoring and being on top of things and not letting things slip. So we actually get the projects on the ground.
And I appreciate that and support it. But this council, from what I know of, I mean, maybe you can enlighten me, we haven't had any of those projects actually put a serious plan down that was going to be accepted by this council. So that's why I'm a little confused as to, now we're gonna spend forty thousand dollars on these three to five projects that really haven't come-
Right.
There's, you know-
Yeah, we're not gonna spend forty-two thousand dollars unless there's a reason to spend that money. So what we're, what I'm trying to do is to create an authorization and appropriation that I can begin to use once we get through the holidays and hit the ground running in January with some of this. And as far as specific projects, we're talking Ninth and J, and there have been discussions in closed session about concepts for that project. We're gonna be talking at the end of the meeting, going back into closed session tonight, about the City Center Motel property, Seventh and J. I've had proposals from developers, again, about the, the current owner of the Ninth and, someone told me what it was.
E.
E property there, that corner. El Patio Motel, number of indications of interest. It's hard to know how serious any of the people are, but that's an, obviously, a property with a lot of potential. And I've got probably three other developer contacts that I've had just in the last two or three months, of people inquiring about, I think, hearing about the fact that we're gonna begin to move forward. And I just don't, you know, there's, there's no shortage of interest out there. It's hard to know how serious any of them are at this point, because a lot of people are very nervous about doing anything, building anything in the residential area until we see what's gonna happen with the economy. But I wouldn't be sitting here tonight asking for the money if I didn't think that at least three of the projects were serious enough to begin to require PMC's assistance, I'd say as early as, you know, right when we come back from the, the holiday break, that there'll be tangible stuff that can, we can begin to do on those projects.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, Jim, thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll open this up to public comment at this time. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and/or action.
I'll make a motion to authorize the tasks three, five, six, and nine for the total of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any comment? Discussion? Okay, we'll pull the vote.
Director Shalom?
No.
Director Ania?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Chair Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries three to one. And I would, I would just offer in, in closing that this talked about low and moderate income housing, and it's important and it's part of the bigger plan as far as the state is requiring. But I would hope that we don't lose sight as a board of, in the future, as signature or a mixed-use or a centerpiece project for downtown, because I think it's gonna take the combination of those kinds of developments, mixed-use with retail and commercial and/or office space and/or housing that brings people to downtown and they have, they have a buy-in, if you will. So I would like for us to keep that in mind in the future.
And I would just like to add that a couple of these projects that have affordable housing units also have some moderate and low, low-income housing units. So they're not all just low-income housing units.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so any other redevelopment agency items? Seeing none, we'll close the redevelopment agency and reopen or reconvene the city council meeting. And we will move on to item number eight, there's no public hearing. So item number nine, reports. City, Crescent City programs, projects from the staff or outside agencies. Mr. Butler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Slert, members of the council. Tonight, we have what I think is a first for at least the last few years, and that is an update from our information technology administrator. I call him the gentle giant, Fritz Ludeman. He's a big guy, big guy, kind of a scary guy if you meet him in a dark alley, but he's very nice. He won't hurt anyone. And he's an excellent one-man, basically a one-man show, information technology administrator who does his own, doesn't have a big support staff or, you know, a fancy consultant team, really. He's pretty much doing his own thing, but does an excellent job for us.
We gave you permission to not be so gentle on him tomorrow.
Okay. And I asked Fritz a couple of months ago to, and we'll probably do this twice a year, I'm thinking now, to update the council on the whole world of Crescent City technology, what's going on, what he has accomplished in the last few months, what he's currently working on, what the future projects are. It's really important for the council, I think, to be aware of what Fritz is, is doing. He's kind, he doesn't get a whole lot of face time with the council or, or necessarily with the public, but he does really important work for us. And local governments are becoming more and more dependent on technology to provide services and to connect with their residents and do the things that councils are expecting them to do. And Fritz is a huge part of that. So we're gonna have him present his first update for us, and then, like I say, probably about twice a year, we'll have him come back and give us the latest. Fritz?
Okay, well, with that introduction, I guess I'll just jump right in. We thought since this was the first time that I was appearing in front of you, that I would go ahead and kind of give you an overview of what exactly I do. So, get started here. I am the, my name's Fritz, and everybody knows me, so I am the information services administrator, and my areas of responsibility include administering, installing, and maintaining, and providing overall support for city networks and networking hardware, installing, rebuilding existing servers and configuring workstations, peripherals, and settings for those. peripherals being, you know, scanners, printers, things like that. I also repair and recover from hardware and software failures. I configure and automate backups of city, critical city electronic data. And on the GIS side, I collect and maintain and update GIS data in cooperation with Public Works. As far as administrative and maintenance tasks, I, I also am in control, I also do access control. I maintain user accounts and permissions to city data. I maintain and monitor security of city assets through applying updates and patches, antivirus software and anti-spam. And, and I also audit on, on a fairly regular basis. I also assist staff from everything from minor tech, minor technical issues, in which I act as a help desk. And I also assist them to, assist them with custom reports and database extractions, anything like that. I train staff in the use of software and hardware. And last but not least, I maintain the city webpage, including updates and uploading the city documents.
We laugh because there was a period of time where I was getting very colorful spam email on my city email. And I would just copy it and send it all back to Fritz. You'd get like ten a day from me.
Yeah, unfortunately, spam is, is an ongoing problem. We do knock down about ten to eleven thousand spam emails a month, so. So after that, we'll go to recent projects. Just finishing up, one that I really wanted to see happen for a long time, and that was wireless connectivity of city buildings. Before this, all of the buildings were running isolated networks of their own, and there was no connectivity between them. And now, we've put up patches and hops between numerous, numerous city buildings and connected them. So now we're running one large network. The buildings that are connected are City Hall, the Police Department, Housing Authority, the lab, and all of that is running centrally through the fire hall. This has the benefit of making administrative, administration of the server a lot easier for me. I don't have to go from building to building all the time to, you know, perform any updates or anything like that. It also has the benefit of allowing me to offer services centrally, so I can install software on one server and push it out to other locations inside the city. And it also has the added benefit of laying the groundwork for future services. For instance, you know, citywide Springbrook access. For those of you who don't know what Springbrook is, it's our finance suite of software. And here's a couple of pictures for you. The one you see on the left is actually one of our Public Works crew, who was very valuable in assisting installing these. Right to the right of him, as you'll see, is one of the patches that I'm referring to. That one is actually pointing out in the distance, and if you see that little, it's, might be hard for you to see, a little stick sticking up there, that's actually the tower, the T-Mobile tower, and it's pointing at that. The one on the right is actually just the other side of the antennas on the fire hall. Moving on to the T-Mobile tower, if you'll remember, I was, earlier this year, the council entered into an agreement with T-Mobile to purchase space and erect a tower at this courtyard. That was actually completed in September. It had a benefit for us in the sense that that height allowed us to reach wirelessly all the way out to the lab. So we got line of sight all the way out there, and that was very key, because we were, that was going to be a, a big sticking point for us. It will have the added benefit later of acting as a node on our upcoming public safety narrow band system. It will, and it will also serve as a base for our upcoming wireless system telemetry upgrade, I mean, for, for the water system. The county IT and the city actually got to collaborate a little bit on this, on this project, in the sense that they're going to, in exchange for space on this tower, they're going to offer us climbing service. What I mean by climbing services is they will, if we have an issue for maintenance with our antennas, they will actually go up and climb and perform that maintenance for us. Because it, it does seem you have to be certified to do that, because it's so high. Okay. On a project that was initiated by City Clerk Diana L. Kirsten Wright before she left, was a document management website. This was done just prior to her departure and ended up being in information services after she left. What we ended up doing was implementing the site along with a consultant named Syntec, and it is to scan city documents as a hosted solution. Now, that hosted solution is actually located on two separate, in two separate locations, one in servers in Sacramento and servers in Las Vegas. And that's mainly for redundancy purposes. Nearly forty box, forty boxes of documents were scanned. Those documents included council meeting agendas going all the way back to nineteen eighty-five, minutes, resolutions, and ordinance going all the way back to the incorporation of the city in eighteen fifty-four. Those documents will be searchable, with the exception of the ones that are handwritten. Those handwritten documents were about nineteen twenty. And we're soon to make that accessible to the public from the city website, so everybody will be able to access that, use it as a research tool. Included a, just a screenshot here of what the interface somewhat looks like. If you look on the left, you'll see that those are actually files. They're all scanned in Adobe Acrobat, which is a, a pretty common format, along with their meeting date and what kind of meetings those are. And this is essentially what everybody would see, the public or anyone else. And if you were to click on one of those open files, this is what you would get. You see, this is actually a sample of the minutes from earlier this year.
Fritz, do you mind if I interject? That ordinance number one of the city of Crescent City was to establish the office of the city attorney.
Yes, I actually found that out in the process of those, looking at those documents.
Are you sure?
I saw it with my own eyes.
I actually made a copy of it for him. Yeah, up until, up until about nineteen, I wanna say about nineteen seventy, a lot of these were in bound books and type written from nineteen twenty, nineteen seventy, thereabouts. Anyhow, another, another, one of my duties is geographic information systems, or GIS. We did a workshop on this a number of years ago. Really what GIS is, is the merging of data and mapping. And some of, some of the things that we have done in cooperation with Public Works is we've mapped the water system, including the water valves, our sewer system, including the manholes on the stations, storm drains, including manholes and drainage units, our streetlights with connected circuits, fire hydrants, apartment number and RV trailer space locations. That's, that's served for, mainly for public safety. We actually designated what floor and what apartment numbers those are on, so they can actually put that on a map and see when they go on a call.
Do they use that?
Chief Wakefield does use that in his car, or in his vehicle. Base map objects like streets, parcels, zoning, things like that. So- So that data is used by nearly all city departments to illustrate objects in aid in decision-making. One example was the fire hydrants for Chief Wakefield.
Is there, or would the, that GIS be helpful for the Police Department?
It would, and actually, I'm going to get to that. One of the recently completed GIS projects is something I've really wanted to do for a long time, was to be able to map crime statistics from the Police Department's record system. So what I did was used, leveraged GIS to actually obtain the coordinates for all of the locations of occurrences from their records management system inside the city. Historically, there are 8,000 locations. And I will show you an example of that in a moment. And just to note, the city and county have shared GIS data to the benefit of both organizations. Mainly, we have exchanged ortho photo, ortho photo data and parcel data.
Fritz, maybe if I could ask a question while we're at this point?
Go ahead.
I remember back when we were going through, I think, our budgets a few months ago, the issue of communication between the Crescent City Police Department and the sheriffs.
Mm-hmm.
And that seemed to me that there was something requiring our Police Department to go in and actually manually put this information from some kind of a, an arrest or something into the computer when the county already had it, but their system doesn't talk to our system?
The booking information?
Actually, I'll uncover that in, or at least a little bit in the future slide.
Okay.
So if I could hold off on that answer for just a few minutes?
Sure.
Okay, and what I have here, and it doesn't illustrate too well on this slide, I don't think, is a couple, a couple of examples of maps that were gleaned from the GIS data and the police records management system. On the left is, is a map of burglary instances inside the city in the last five years, color-coded to the year. I wish I could show you something a little bit larger. And on the right is five-year occurrences of vandalism inside the city in the last five years.
Can we just get copies of this?
Sure.
You know what I find really interesting about this is that I just attended the Healthy Communities Forum with the Wild Rivers Community Foundation, and they showed us basically the same thing, but for the state of California, and all of, all of the different social services and crime, crimes, and also people that used services from the county, whether it was welfare kinds of services.
It's Oakland.
And they use that information to really be able to see how much money was being spent in, in certain neighborhoods, and how they could use that to start implementing, you know, some groundwork to help build those neighborhoods up.
Alameda.
Some current and upcoming projects. Here's the CODY Data Sharing Project that we were talking about. That project is actually a county-initiated project off of a grant, and it was to, what it was designed to do was act as a middleware solution between the sheriff's records management system and the Crescent City Police's records management system. It is operational and has been deployed at the Police Department, and it is working. As far as the manual updates go, and I think what, what you're referring to is individuals from each department are going to actually go, have to go into those databases and say, what does the county use as a code for a crime, and what does the city use as a code for a crime, and tell the system, you know, tell the system that that, they equate to each other, is essentially what it is. Right now, they're sharing names and name data, and that's about it, so.
So would there be something to, changing software horses or your department focusing on facilitating to make that connection?
I'm not familiar enough with the crime, with the criminal codes to probably facilitate something like that. That would have to be something that would be done by the Police Department staff. Unfortunately, we were going to have Donna Arnett do that, she has since retired, so I would imagine that duty's going to fall, and Doug will have to speak to this, that duty will probably fall on the new records clerk. So I will help in any way I can in order to use the software.
And I think one of the issues that we were actually discussing was the fact that someone was in the city and they'd call 911, and sometimes that, when that was dispatched, it wouldn't be dispatched to the city. It would, it would actually be a sheriff that would respond in the city. And then, the city didn't have access to that information so that they could follow up. Am I, is that right? Yeah?
And I don't know about the dispatching end of that. I can't speak to that. This is really just for records management and doing, and reports, even though it is, for the most part, real time. So if it's entered in to the county system, it should appear or be accessible to our system within minutes.
Hmm, that's good. Maybe that'll help.
And lastly, or at least one of the things that I'm sure a lot of people want to see is a renovation of the city website. One of my goals for this will be to improve the organization of the site. It has grown quite a bit since it was originally designed about eight years ago. We were putting, we put on a lot more content on it, and information on it can be a little bit harder to access. I'd like to see something where you can actually access what you want to see within two or three clicks, rather than have to really drill down. Okay. More current and upcoming projects. Police Department mobile data terminals. On a Homeland Security grant, we are looking to equip, equip four squad cars with mobile data terminals, in other words, laptops, to allow remote access to our records management This will have the benefit of allowing the officers in their cars to access RMS without having to come in the office and do reports. They can actually initiate those in their vehicles. It also serves as a platform for providing services in the future, such as maybe CLUDS access, things like that. CLUDS being International Agency Jacks, things like that. Also working on a waste, waste water treatment plant installation, installation of servers and workstations down there. I have been working with Kennedy Jinks, one of our, one of the consultants working with Public Works, to prepare for a client-server installation of their operations and, is it operations and maintenance or, yeah, operations and maintenance manual? And last but not least, we are beginning a path to upgrading our finance suite Springbrook to version seven. It is a newer rewrite of the whole user interface, and this is going to allow staff to report easier, extract data easier, and will run kind of along that same vein of allowing us to deploy this citywide. The licensing in version seven is much better in the sense that it's going to allow us to maybe give access to department heads so they can look at their own budgets and things like that. So if there's no more, if there's no questions, that's, that's the end of my presentation.
Any questions by the council? Please.
I know that you said that the, I, a lot of the IT is backed up in Vegas and Sacramento. Which part is?
That's only the document management solution.
Right, so my question is, are we backing up our information and holding it at an outside area in case of emergency disaster?
We are, we actually are out, when you say outside the area, I, I, right now, we're backing up outside the flood zone.
Okay.
Okay.
I just remember the, the conversation a few years ago of the IT over in like Jackson or Josephine County volunteering for us to use that location for backup.
I don't know anything about that.
Would that be a benefit?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. That was it.
As long as we have the, as long as the bandwidth exists to get us out there, that's, that's the real amount of data that we have, so.
Fritz, I found this presentation really valuable, this review. First of all, it lets us get some idea of how complex and how many things you're dealing with. Clearly, we're coming out of the dark ages in rural America as we approach cyberspace. And I remember seeing the ledgers, handwritten ledgers of the city that Ms. Shalong offered at the Fourth of July exhibit last year. That was incredible to see that somebody sat there, the city clerk and whoever, and handwrote all these ledgers. And now it's at a push of a button, everything's there, and, and I'm glad to hear that the archiving is ongoing, because I knew that it had been initiated and I didn't know if that was still going forward, so.
It's going to be a huge benefit for the public to have all of those records just at their, at their disposal.
Yeah, and the intent will be not to, as, as we do now, we post those documents on the website, and as there's, as those are generated, we'll just put them on the document management site and link to those.
And as we know, everything in, in your industry moves very quickly, and, and I think there's an expectation, I know Mr. Renfro's been involved in updating his site lately, and the visitor bureau is always working on their site, and the city's working on keeping the site fresh and updated.
Speaking of, I asked Bill to talk to you a while back about an issue the TRA agency had about having a lands inventory for the city. He had the inventory, but he had a mess with the software and wasn't able to access it, and I asked him to see if you could give him some assistance. What is the status? Do we have a lands inventory for the city? Because I think that would be especially helpful with the redevelopment agency as well.
Do you want to address that, Bill, or would you? Oh, okay. Yeah, he did bring up a database by, and I was able to extract some of that data for him. I think it was, was what I got for you useful? Okay. Some of it was actually password protected, and it looked like it might have been licensed software that it came from, and at that point, it was really coming up on me to stop trying to do anything with that. But all the other data I was able to extract for him.
So does the city outside of the TRA agency have an inventory of lands that we, that are available?
That was up county.
That was up county? Okay. I really don't know as far as what was in contained in all of that data, because once I extracted it, I gave it back to Bill.
Okay. I just think it would be helpful in partnering with the TRA agency even, to have an inventory of the lands available for development within the city.
Absolutely.
And so maybe you can talk to Bill about that and decide if that would be a priority for the RDA?
I think that's what the real world does today, is they do window shopping on the internet of cities and communities and see what's available.
Yeah, it, it's a part of a GIS, is to have that base land map, and then you see, you can see what services are available at that piece of land, what the zoning is, that kind of information.
Great. Okay, thank you, Fritz.
Yeah, thank you. You are a huge asset to us, huge.
Thank you.
No pun intended, Mr. Butler.
Okay, next we will have a report from the LSC Transportation Consultants, Inc., Representative Planner Genevee Evans. Genevee, excuse me. And this is regarding the status of the Delmarck County Transportation Matters.
I have some handouts.
This is yours, right?
Yes. I'm, this one has.
Yeah, I'll let her.
So, good evening. My name is Genevee Evans, and I'm a planner with LSC Transportation Consultants, and we've been charged with the duty of conducting the 2011 update of the Delmarck County Regional Transportation Plan, or RTP for short. Today, while public input is very important to any planning process, thank you, so today I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the regional transportation, transportation planning process, the RTP document itself, and then get input from the city council and the public, if that's possible, on the process. So for the regional transportation planning process, you may or may not be aware, there are a variety of transportation funding sources, which are regional in nature, not, you know, specific for the city or the county, and they are funneled from the state or federal government through an agency called the Regional Transportation Planning Agency. And in Delmarck County's case, this is the Local Transportation Commission, which is composed of city council members and county board of supervisor members. And to ensure that these transportation funding sources are being spent wisely and addressing needs in the county, and to also make sure that the public is involved in the transportation planning process, the state mandates that the LTC or each RTPA update, I know there's a lot of acronyms, so stop me if I start using too many, that a regional transportation plan or RTP must be updated every five years. So that's what we're doing.
Can I ask real quick, because we didn't have anything ahead of time, so, nor do we have it on here for public comment, so is, I don't think that's...
Well, I'm, I'm looking mainly to get input from the city council as well, if that's possible. What I'm getting to is we're, we're trying to prioritize what transportation improvements are top priority.
Right, I was just saying, you know, going to say that if you were looking for public comment, you know, the public would not have known that they had that opportunity because it wasn't, it was just under a report, so.
Right, yeah, I wasn't sure how it was going to be put on the agenda. But I'll also give you, oh, go ahead.
That's up to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Slert. I'm Tamara Layton, I'm the Executive Director of the Delmarck Local Transportation Commission. The intent of our meetings and information this week is more to let the city council and other organizations in our community, including, you know, members of the public in all of our outlying areas and within the city limits, know that we're undertaking this process and this document. It's going to be a process and a document that's moving forward and will be before the Local Transportation Commission in June. So we have quite a bit of time between now and then. It's more of an introduction to the work that we're doing, that it's a significant planning document. We're working with the city staff to update lots of datas, lots of data and figures in the document. So it's more of an introduction to the work that we're doing, so you know what's happening in your community, that it's a really key document for moving forward with transportation planning projects. For example, if you, if the city has a project that it would like to move forward with that is not in the regional transportation plan, we have to go back and update the regional transportation plan to provide funding for that project through the Local Transportation Commission. So it's more of a heads-up that this work, we're undertaking this work right now, more so than expecting you to provide priority projects or public input at this time. The Local Transportation Commission itself is obligated to meet those processes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tamara.
We'll have our Local Transportation Commission meeting on Thursday at 4:00.
And we will also be there. This is kind of the first stop for me on, I'm going to be here in Crescent City for four days. I've been staff, I will, and I, today I staffed an information table at Ray's Food Place, trying to provide an informal setting to engage the public, to give us their comments on what they think is more, most important, and I'll be doing that at a couple other places, meeting with the tribes, going to the harbor commission meeting as well to give them a heads-up. So that's the public input calendar. So anyway, I'll get, give you my contact information at the end of the presentation. I'll try and not take too long. But just to explain what an RTP is, if you're not familiar, the intent of the document is to provide a, a the intent of the document is to provide a clear vision of the goals and transportation strategies for the Delmar County region for the next 20 years. And when I talk about regional transportation projects, it's rather broad in nature. It's not just improving our roads and highways. This also includes bicycle and pedestrian facilities, the airport, public transit, strategies to improve goods movement in the county, and teletransportation, the idea of persons commuting over the internet. The RTP is broken down into a couple different elements. We've, the document first starts out with a description of existing conditions, demographics, economics, outlines what the transportation facilities are in the county, what roadways we have, what bike paths, et cetera. And then there's a policy element that outlines and sets forth the regional transportation goals and policies. An important part of the document and what a lot will come from, public input and stakeholder input, city council input and whatnot, is a discussion or an identification of what are our regional transportation needs or what are the problems here in Delmar County? Is, are there, is there a lot of traffic congestion? Do we need to expand the roadways? Probably not here in Delmar County. Or is it more, we need to pay more attention to fixing the roadways, things of that nature? Do we want to spend more time improving public transit? The meat of the document is the action element. And this is where we list all those transportation capital improvements for the next 20 years. And as Tamara noted, if we want something funded, we want to finally go and construct something, it does have to be in this document. Finally, there is a financial element where we look into our crystal ball and project transportation revenues or what money we think is going to be available for these projects for the next 20 years. And hopefully demonstrate that at least in the short term, we have a list of financially constrained projects. I wanted to just give you, in case people are not aware, just some quick examples of what regional transportation projects are. This is just a listing. I'm not going to go through all of them. An example of a project which has been funded, it's not constructed yet, is the improving Highway 199 and 197 corridor so that larger trucks can travel through there. And this will not only improve the safety of the corridor, but also improve goods movement, which will in turn hopefully help economic growth in the county. Traffic calming is another type of project that can be included in an RTP. This is the idea of getting motorists to slow down as they go through a community like Crescent City so you can put in things like raised medians and high, highly visible pedestrian crossings, crosswalks, things of that nature, try and get people to slow down. Of course, rehabilitating and reconstructing roadways that have poor pavement conditions, these are good examples of RTP projects in, in the city and the county. On the public transit side, so these are capital improvement projects, not funding that goes towards operating the bus system. But for public transit, we're thinking more about buying new buses, replacing the fleet as it ages. And also constructing bus shelters and benches along the transit routes. There was recently a bicycle facilities plan updated. And there's a list of bike routes and bike paths that are important or we feel are important for Delmar County. All these are examples of RTP projects. Again, promoting goods movement through harbor expansion and improving trucking routes does fall under the RTP umbrella. And finally, for aviation, expanding the airports and other improvements there. So as you can see, you know, there's potentially a long list of transportation improvement projects. And with money tight these days, it's not financially feasible to implement all of these, especially not in the short term. So what I'm really going out there asking the public, and I would like your opinion as well, if you can, is what do you feel are the shortfalls and shortcomings in Delmar County in our transportation network? Where should we focus, where should the focus of the funding be? Where should the dollars go? Should we focus on roadways or focus on bicycle and pedestrian facilities or goods movement? And even specific input would be great, you know, which roadways, you know, which projects we're looking for. And this next slide here gives you, there is a project website and that's also on your handout. And I have some flyers I could leave over there in case members of the public would like to take that. And I would encourage you to give me a call or email me and let me know your thoughts. And on the website also, we'll keep everybody up to date with any public input for their events and all post documents as they're completed. We're at the early phases of the study right now, just about to finish up an existing conditions memo. And a draft, a public draft probably won't be available till spring. But this is my information. I would like to answer any questions or take any input from the city council if that's possible.
Great, Genevee, thank you. Council?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So you're, you're hired from the Local Transportation as a consultant?
Correct.
And how long will you be, how long will those services be going on?
Till about June, I believe is when we feel the final.
The reason I'm asking is I'll be joining that commission.
Okay, great.
As a new member.
Great.
And I'll, I'll see what's happened in the last two years because I was on it before. One of the things I wanted to ask you was, is, rather, do you also follow other counties? The reason I'm asking is Humboldt County is trying to get the southern part of that county to go through, to widen the road for goods transportation of larger trucks. So are you monitoring that project too through Richardson Grove, which would greatly benefit Crescent City?
You know, we do contact adjacent county regional transportation planning agencies. I haven't heard from Humboldt. But I have heard from Tamara that that is, the Richardson Grove project is an issue. And actually, I've contacted truck traffic generators in the county to get their input on the highways. And that's something that has come up. It's not a project that would be in this RTP since it's not Delmar County. But it would be part of the discussion of our, what are the transportation needs. A lot of the RTP is to provide document and justify, you know, what projects we feel are important. So that would go in the discussion.
So that, this, this list would be done by spring of our priorities?
Yes, that's, that's the schedule, yeah.
The reason I ask that is because I was just appointed to the League of California's Policy Committee on Transportation Communications and Public Works. So we'll be meeting several times during the year. And I like to bring those projects that we set as priorities to see how we can fund them.
Okay, great. Well, we'll make sure that you're in the loop.
No, I don't have any questions at this time, but I'm very glad that you're here and I'll look forward to seeing you Thursday at our meeting.
Great.
Ms. Shalong?
For the city, I think one of our biggest priorities is the reconstruction of Front Street. And then I'm also a director for the Airport Authority.
Okay.
And so as a community, I feel like besides 197 and 199, one of our biggest regional needs is, is obviously the airport expansion.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, you took my two comments. But, but the airport, moving forward, ultimately there's going to be a new access road. So that's going to be a key part to the ultimate success of the airport facility. And I guess I could imagine at some point in time in the future, a need for a transportation center.
A transit center?
Multiple nodes of transportation coming together and exchange, especially with our weather elements here. So it would be a kind of a center point.
I don't know if it matters, but, and maybe you already know this, I'm sure you do. But when it comes to funding, you know, some of our roads are within the tribe's inventory. And there is special funding.
Right.
For that improvement.
And well, I don't, when I've done RTPs before, I haven't usually projected tribal funding, but that is something to consider.
Yeah, maybe just explore it with them. I don't know what the status is, but I know that that was what we were told when we dedicated some of those roads to their inventory.
Okay. Good to know.
Thanks.
And I think, did I understand at one time that they were actually going to be a partner with us on some of our roads?
That's what I'm talking about. They have that possibility. It's not a yes, they can or will, but it's, it's an opportunity that they said that they would be willing to explore.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Genevee. Okay, that concludes our reports. At this time, we'll move into a public comment period. And any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City, comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted note. However, if the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendantized items, such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency. For the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Mr. Yarborough?
Good evening, Mayor. I'd like to extend my public congratulations to your nomination.
Thank you.
Tonight, I, this is my penance for not attending the local Toastmasters meeting last Thursday, which I highly recommend to anybody who's interested in the Toastmasters out at the College of Redwoods, meets every Thursday night at seven o'clock. Tonight, I, I'd like to talk about one specific issue, but I, I have a preamble to get there. When I was going to high school in the late 60s, I was before the Nike generation. And I bring that up because with my reference to my speaking tonight, I don't have a, a great tendency to do scripts. I like impromptu. I just do it. So with that, today, or recently, there was a recognition by the American Psychological Council that they were no longer going to count narcissism as neurosis. And narcissism being self-obsessed, self-centered. A lot, mostly because of the internet, with the creation, the ability of people to create webpages, MySpace and MyFacebook. So what? Well, the, the council's number one priority is governance. Its second is politics. And with that, something else that is near and dear to my heart is called synchronicity, when two things come together at the same time for no apparent reason. I, I recently was referred to a quote from Plato who said, "One of the, one of the penalties for refusing to participate in politics is you end up being governed by your inferiors." Not making any characters, character evaluations here. I, I am looking at a problem which is being very well addressed by our new IT fella and bringing the council and the community into the 21st century electronically. I, I wholeheartedly am a proponent of access to the process by the public and to the, to the officials that help make their lives better. And in that vein, I was recently given awareness of a letter by Bill Lonsdale with reference to Director Enya's, Aneah's topic of having the cards for people who don't have the ability to come up in front of a microscope, microphone and speak and have the public, the ability to speak publicly about something. Also, in a earlier conversation with you, I, I wholeheartedly back your establishment of regular meetings, like a town hall meeting or a meeting of the public in a non-formal environment to get items that would not normally come out in a city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarborough. Any other public comments? Please.
John?
Good evening. All right. John Parment here. I represent Walgreens in Crescent City. And we're in the process of installing our electronic reader board. I want to thank Mr. Aneah for his work in the city planner's office and allowing that to happen. And just want to invite you to, if you've got something you want me to put on the reader board, just give me a call. And I'm all for, you've seen before with the old fashioned version, that I would often have public events on there. And same thing, same thing applies. Just give me a call if I can approach the...
My birthday?
No, no, we don't, we don't do birthdays.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Do you, do you post that you can buy your wonderful CDs?
I can't sell those at Walgreens.
Oh, you can't?
Conflict of interest.
You can buy them at Delmar Office Supply.
You can, yes. Rika's Talking Crow Studio also. Thank you. Thank you. So I have to limit, you know, to a certain extent, it can't be all public stuff. We're in the business of selling things too. But, but please, if you have an event, Amber Alerts will be automatic. Amber Alerts, our system is tied into.
Oh, excellent.
And also, if there's closures on 199, I'm interested in getting those on there too. I just have to make sure that I get notification that the road is back open again because I wouldn't want to give disinformation.
The radio station gets that information directly from the CHP.
If I can just have the CHP call me, it's easy. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
That's great, John. You're a great neighbor.
Happy to be here.
Thank you.
You know, we, we took this up, it's been probably a year and a half with the planning commission when he wanted to bring his sign there. And so we helped him with that. And also, he is keeping his word by telling the city that we may use it, especially like if we have town hall events or if we have certain events that the city has, that's right there in the middle of town.
Very positive.
So it's very nice. And thank you again for that.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Ms. Cooper?
I'm in Cooper. I appreciate, here I see an item on the agenda that possibly can, can improve public participation in changing where and how public comments. Like if I, if I had to go home quickly today, I've been waiting, let's see, since like around six o'clock. And now it's 10 to, 10 to eight. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to the item on the agenda that may simplify coming up here for me and saying something. And also, it seems like, let's say all of you were on the opposite side of something that I was on, but I thought that there was a heck of a lot of people in the community that really, you know, thought otherwise. And, and let's say you agreed with this council, that I, then I would have no opportunity really, perhaps, to get something on the agenda. And I, I'm one that thinks, well, democracy shouldn't work that way. And that if enough people would care to have something on the agenda, they should have something on the agenda. And so I would like to look into a little bit about how, if you have so many so citizens that want something on the agenda, why shouldn't they be allowed to have something on the agenda? So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that the batteries are dead on that, so we'll be utilizing this one.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other public comment?
Kirk Roberts, I live in the city. While I appreciate Richard Aneah's idea on combining public comment, I think you have to keep it also open during specific items after staff information and other questions are raised by both the council and staff people. So that if people have public comment they want to make about the factual information they are given versus the rumor and innuendo that goes around. You know, if they're up here at six o'clock giving their feelings, they don't have the facts. I think you're doing yourself at this service and you're probably helping to propagate more rumors. So I would hope that you would have some mechanism for interested parties to speak during the specific items. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Roberts. Hello, Cheryl.
Hello. Good evening. Cheryl Corpstein, county resident, Vice...
Cheryl Corpstein, County Resident, Vice President of the Business Improvement District. I apologize for being late this evening. We have asked that at a future City Council meeting, the issue of our vacancy on the Board be on your agenda. We've had some issues come up within the bid lately, an illness in our President's family and some other issues with the parade. And so I am here because I did at our bid meeting tell folks that I would do that. We are public, I am publicly, as a bid member, recommending that when that comes on your agenda, you appoint Sam Rutledge. We had two volunteers, Mr. Rutledge and Irene Contreras of Beauty Secrets. Irene graciously said she would do it if one of us nominated her, but Mr. Rutledge has displayed a great deal of enthusiasm for being on the Board. He's attended meetings regularly. He's done a lot of homework, and so publicly, I am recommending when, when and if that comes forward, we make that appointment for Mr. Rutledge.
Can I just ask a quick question? Isn't he one of the proponents to dissolve the bid?
Mr. Rutledge has come to bid meetings and asked a lot of questions. I have had some discussion with him, and he sits on the fence. I think he would like to see some changes, but he's not completely sold on bid going away, so.
The meetings that I was at, he was very negative about bid and the city itself, so...
But I think we've addressed some of his questions, and I think that he, I don't know, maybe it's a good idea to have both sides on the board. So anyway, that was my, my recommendation to you, so thank you for your time.
Sure.
I actually think I did see a bit of a change of heart in one of the more recent meetings.
Good. That's good progress.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to item number 10, continuing business. We'll consider, waive the full reading and read by title, adopt ordinance number 759 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City adding chapter 10.60, impounded vehicles to title 10 of the Crescent City Municipal Code establishing standard vehicle release requirements and administrative fees. We had a presentation by the Chief, I think perhaps the last meeting, and so this is back before us, is continuing business. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is just a second reading of the ordinance that was approved by the Council on November 15th, and assuming that the Council adopts the ordinance tonight, upon second reading, it would go into effect 30 days from this evening, and we're not making, not recommending any changes to what was approved back on November 15th.
I would just suggest that you change the name for the Mayor. Signature?
Oh. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
In that case, I'll move to adopt ordinance number 759 for the impounded vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before that, is there any public comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we'll pull the vote.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries four to zero. So moving to item number 11 on the agenda, we'll consider the payment number 42 for Walland Construction and payment invoice number 8112 for Stover Engineering regarding the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the Council, this is just the monthly request, payment request for Walland and Stover. You'll notice that the amounts are getting smaller as we're winding down, and we're probably within two or three months of being done with all of those. Really nothing major in terms of a change. There were a few notes that Mr. Barnes made in his cover memo, and, is he back there? Yeah, he's back. I know Mr. Aneah had asked earlier today about the Louvers, and I'm not sure, that may have been already answered.
It's been resolved, yes.
Okay. But other than that, we're recommending approval, and like I say, getting very close to wrapping everything up.
I just had a quick question on the Stover Engineering contract revision that's being What, what does the cost for closing out a contract? What is, what does that entail?
I'm going to ask Mr. Barnes to come forward and handle that. I don't think we know completely what the amount is going to be at this point, but Jim has been in discussions with Mr. Stover, so he may know a little more detail.
Well, I think you'll bring a, we'll have something for you at the next meeting. We'll go over it.
Some kind of a proposal?
Yeah. But what we've been doing is, we've had some engineering work that we've been doing to, because of some fines and different things we've been doing at the end of this project that has, and the project's extended out, and so it has cost a little more than we originally thought, but it's also being covered by the SRF contract. So we'll put a proposal together. I mean, it's being paid for through those funds, through that loan process, but we'll put a proposal together and bring it.
So this is an additional contract with the SRF?
No. What I'm saying is, it isn't paid by the sewer account. It actually goes into the sewer.
It's still going to fall within our $37 million contract?
Yeah. The $43 million contract. SRF has an allotment for engineering, for the actual construction management portion, and they're well within what SRF allot's for that.
Right, which is why we went back and extended the contract previously, so I was just curious, but it sound, okay, never mind. We'll see, next meeting.
There is, though, a standard American Institute of Architects and/or Engineers has a form...
I'm very, very familiar with that.
Yeah, so, and we'll talk about it. We'll put something together.
It sounds like it's addition, in addition to what we approved previously due to some fines that were not expected.
Yeah, and we had additional engineering and put some things, additions to the contract, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Barnes.
I move to approve. Do we already have a motion?
Not yet.
Sorry.
Discussion or motion?
I move to approve payment 42 for Walland and 8112 for Stover Engineering.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll pull the vote.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So that motion is approved unanimously, and we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 12, rescind and Resolution Number 2010-28, and consider and approve amended resolution adding section four in title Resolution Number 2010-30, an amendment resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, resigning the fact of the consolidated general election held on November 2nd, 2010, certifying the results and such other matters as provided by law. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of the Council, at your November 15th meeting, you approved a resolution dealing with the recent November 2nd municipal election, and of course, you conducted your swearing-in process at that time and did the installation of Mr. Aneah, said farewell to Mr. Burns. The resolution that you approved at that time was perfectly valid in every way, except that it stated in one of the first paragraphs, the number of votes that were cast, ballots cast in Crescent City. The number we listed there was the number for the entire county of Del Norte instead of just the City of Crescent City. So we wanted to go back, just in the interest of being very accurate, and restate this resolution with the number, the accurate number for ballots cast within the city limits of Crescent City. And then I believe we added a paragraph at the end also that clarifies who actually won each seat. So again, doesn't change any of the results at all, it doesn't invalidate anything that happened on November 15th. It doesn't mean that Mr. Aneah was not validly sworn in. We just wanted to make sure that we have a proper resolution on the record that reflects that total number of ballots cast in Crescent City. So we are asking you to rescind the previous resolution and adopt this new revised resolution. And unless there are any questions, our recommendation is approval.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring to the Council any questions, Council. Discussion, action?
I'll move that we rescind Resolution Number 2010-28 and approve amended resolution adding section four to Resolution Number 2010-30.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it passes unanimously, four to nothing. So we'll move to item number 13, and this is regarding to consider and/or approve the three-party city-county services area number two in the Harbor District agreement for the transfer, acceptance and capacity allocation of a 12-inch wastewater pressure line and related facilities owned by the Crescent City Harbor District. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Slert and members of the Council, another kind of exciting milestone tonight. We have been talking for a while now about putting together an agreement that would provide a legal framework and a financial framework to accomplish what we want to accomplish as far as being able to serve the seafood facilities at the harbor with our new wastewater treatment plant. And this draft that you have before you this evening is an agreement that would make that happen. We have a couple of conflicts we need to talk about, first of all. The reason Mr. Black is sitting in the front row is he has served as Council to the Harbor District for purposes of working on this agreement, so he's not going to participate in tonight's discussion from the city side. We have Harriet Steiner from Best Bestin Krieger, who has reviewed the agreement, and I'm going to recommend that if the Council is ready to approve the agreement tonight, that it be approved on the condition that Harriet does a final sign-off on her legal review. She has reviewed it, has indicated that there are no glaring concerns she has at this point, but there have been a couple of different updated versions circulated today, and we want to make sure she gets a chance to take one more shot at the final version. So what the agreement does, oh, by the way, Jim Barnes also is conflicted. He's a man in conflict tonight because he is wearing his county CSA hat in his two-day-a-week job as the county engineer, so he will not be representing the city in this discussion tonight, but Mr. Weir, is he back there? Mr. Weir will be handling the, the technical questions that may come up as the, the one man who's still wearing one, one hat here, except he's a volunteer firefighter.
The only faithful one left.
And we also have Mr. Perry here as a representative.
Yes, we do. Mr. Perry from the Harbor District is here as well.
He went to the dark side too.
So what the agreement does, I'll just kind of give you an overview, and then we'll have Mr. Weir come up and just answer any questions. Actually, Eric was instrumental in kind of laying out the vision for how this all works out, and we want to acknowledge his good work on all of this. It really goes, this agreement goes just beyond the issue of how do we serve Don Alber. I mean, it really creates a legal framework for providing, taking advantage of the capacity that the harbor has in its 12-inch pressure line. How is the financial, how are the financial aspects of that capacity fairly dealt with? How can the CSA benefit to serve the areas that it will serve in the future that could be sending wastewater through that pressure main? And then also, how does the city get reimbursed for the work that we're doing to make all of this possible? So it handles a variety of questions, and it really, you know, gets beyond just the immediate issue of one seafood processor. It really creates a framework for seafood processing to be viable and successful at the harbor into the future. I don't really see the need to get into a line-by-line discussion of the agreement. The agreement's pretty clear. It lays out the responsibilities, gives a real good introduction section, talking about the purposes of the agreement, and then kind of focuses on the responsibilities of each party in the three-party agreement. And again, we're talking Harbor District, city and the county's, county service area. In terms of this agreement, it lays out specifics of how the city gets reimbursed for the services that it will provide and for the work that it has done in doing the, laying the infrastructure for the connection between the seafood processing plant and the new treatment plant. Basically, the city will be assuming responsibility and ownership of certain infrastructure and an easement to maintain that infrastructure. The amount, the dollar amounts involved as far as the city spending funds are very low. Their token amount's $100 for, as a one-time lease payment. They're more significant when you talk about the reimbursements to the city for the infrastructure work that we have done. It does put a cap of $100,000 on the amount that the city can bill the harbor for the work on the wet well, the pumping and the sampling facilities, and that work is still to be done. And then it just, it memorializes in the agreement, the share, the cost sharing that Eric Weir laid out for us several months ago, where he first talked about this plan of, you know, using the capacity of the water line, and it breaks down to a percentage, about 58% to the CSA and about 42% to the harbor. There were some exhibits to the agreement that I believe were distributed by Mr. Black earlier, or at least made available to you by Mr. Black, go along with the agreement itself. And we are recommending approval. We think that it is ready to go and will be another step in the process toward being able to serve seafood processing, whether that be Alber Seafood or additional companies down the road, but also protect the city's interests and make sure that the city is not bearing the cost of providing, being able to provide those services. I don't know if Mr. Weir has anything to add from the technical side, but, you know, basically, a lot of the work has been done as far as the, the construction of the main pipeline, connection pipeline, there's still a little bit of work to be done to actually make the switchover happen. And then there may also be some work down the road as far as the wet well, wet well and those facilities, once the service actually is ready to be offered. But we're recommending approval of the agreement tonight, and it will be considered by the Harbor Board and the Board of Supervisors representing or overseeing the CSA, we think in the next couple of weeks.
Would Eric or Mr. Perry like to add anything at this time?
You don't have to.
If you have any questions, go ahead. Okay. Council, questions?
I just, I just have one comment, and I see it's in, under the purpose of Agreement Number Five, that the city is willing to accept certain waste from the seafood processing plant for treatment, including those ways currently processed through the harbor. So if that changes, and they want to introduce any other waste, we have the right to stop it. That's the section that we use? If it's going to harm our plant, if it's going to go through the wastewater plant, not the outfall? I guess I just wanted to hear that.
Yes, correct. There's that section, and then also for any discharge, there'll be an industrial discharge permit that'll be issued to any seafood processor, say, for example, Albers, we're working with him currently on that discharge permit. That'll spell out all of the, all of the certain elements that he can discharge to the plant, such as BOD and suspended solids.
And we control that permit, right?
Correct. That'll be a permit that we draft that he signs.
Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Shaw?
I would just like to say that I've been a proponent of this project for, I think, about four years. It's a long time coming to start serving businesses that can provide jobs, not just seafood processors, but just any business in our area that will start providing jobs for our community, because in this day and age, the only way we're going to get out for our community, because in this day and age, the only way we're going to get out of our own crisis is to create economic development, and we cannot depend on the state of California nor our country to do that for us. And I think that we, as a council, have made tremendous strides to start taking care of ourselves, and this is just one example. And we've been talking about this process in particular for months now, and I am extremely happy with the work that you've accomplished in a relatively short period of time. I think the agreement that has been put together has been very thorough and benefits all three parties, and we all know that any user of our wastewater treatment plant will only be allowed to use our wastewater treatment plant if it benefits that user and does not impede our facility. And we, we as a city actually control those permits. The state does not. So I think this is a win-win situation, and I had one question, and that is if a business actually decides to hook up in the future that is a harbor, is on harbor property, do they pay the hookup fees to the city versus the harbor? Because I just got a little, that just came to mind as I read through this when it talked about the $250 that the CSA would pay to the harbor if the CSA actually had an entity hook into that 12-inch line. So does, if a harbor business, let's say they have a restaurant that opens in their new master plan, do they actually pay the hookup fee to the city if they're using that new 12-inch line?
Yes, if it's a new business and that would be new sewage coming to the plant, then that hookup fee, the current fee anyway of $9,682 would still come to the city, as that fee is for future projects for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, great.
So the $250 is to pay the harbor for capacity within this 12-inch line.
Okay. I think I understand it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
Great job, Eric and Ernie, for your help, too. Thank you. It is complicated, it's a bit of a three-ring circus, the harbor and the city and the county. And I would applaud Mr. Black, even though he's sitting on the other side of the table now. I think he was substantially involved in the drafting of this document, and even I, as an architect, can understand it. So, great job. And I think it is win-win, and it's about creating jobs in our community and about our future.
Three-ring circus at its best. We're all on the same page, moving forward to accomplish the same thing. That's when it all, that synchronicity that he was referring to, that's when it all starts working for the betterment of our residents.
Very good. Is there any public comment on this item? Ms. Cooper?
I think what you mentioned already was part of my question, that new users in the harbor, I guess, pay to hook up, just like anyone else would, and then they also would pay, you know, a monthly fee, just like anybody else would, I suppose. And then one other point is that some uses, such as wastewater with a lot of bio solids, bio, you know, might put a heavy load, you know, on the wastewater treatment plant as being particular kind of a use, more so than a household would per so many gallons of water. You know, fish waste. I know we did have problems with, previously with the cheese factory, and then industrial ways to clean that up were found, I mean, you know, so that the bio, bio solids, which was part of the reason why we needed a new plant, were dealt with before it ever reached us. So I just want to make sure that we have the capacity to, if someone's, you know, putting in so many gallons of really heavy water, that we can do something about it and not take up our capacity without being, you know, reimbursed in some way. Thank you.
Actually, Ms. Cooper, I think that those things specifically have been addressed by this three-ring circus, and specifically, it's my understanding that each of the users have to actually get a permit. So it's all very regulated, and we know, I would say the city has a very good idea of what wants to come into the wastewater treatment plant and what will not or cannot come into the wastewater treatment plant without causing problems, so they've been very specific about that.
And I think that one of the things that we've talked about in the past, I'd just like to remind the staff in the future, after we're completely online and all is good and staff is trained, to do some education and outreach to the community on ways to conserve and/or what not to put in your sewer.
Okay. Ernie?
I'd like to agree with a couple of things that Eric has said, and also emphasize a couple of items. One, in the answer to the question about new development, you know, this, this deals primarily with this pressure line. There are existing lines in the harbor that provide sewer capacity that are owned by the city. Most development's going to connect to those, if not all the development. As far as connection fees at the sewer plant, that's a totally separate issue. Those fees have to be paid, no matter how you look at this issue. But an important aspect, and I think you might be glossing over, is that, you know, the original design of the improvements to the sewer treatment plant of the city was to handle new development, and Mike Young and I and others spent a lot of effort in trying to anticipate that development. So the sewer plant improvements were designed to take this. The harbor area where these plants are is not within the city limits. In a roundabout way, what this does is extend your authority over those plants by acknowledging that these plants have to get waste discharge permits from the city. You now have control, absolute control, over what goes into your system, whereas before and presently, it's a little, no. In this case, you have, which is what you should have, control over what goes into your plant. And from a community standpoint, it's a major investment by the community in that sewer treatment plant. We're all going to pay for it through our rates. You want to exercise that control and run it efficiently as possible. The Harbor District will then relinquish its waste discharge permit, and thereby the city will be in full control of the system, in the harbor.
Yeah, and when we started this process, maybe two years ago, maybe three, when we were sitting at the roundtable, one of the things that we were very clear about was what, what that end product was going to look like. And we did, Eric and Jim were very involved with going out and getting test results from his actual discharge, and then also looking at other, we looked at other communities and what those test results were for different kinds of product discharge, and all of that was taken into consideration before we ever embarked down this road. So there's been a lot of homework done. Yeah, thanks, Ernie.
Thanks, Ernie, for your clarifications.
And our industrial discharge permit, we have all the regulations. I mean, how many pages does that, it's like 40-some pages?
Yeah, it's a huge document.
It's pretty clear what, to control that, so thank you for making that more clear, Ernie. With that, I'll make a motion, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, to adopt the three-party agreement for the transfer, acceptance, and capacity allocation of a 12-inch wastewater pressure line.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor and members of the council, my name's Mike Scuzzo, for the record. A couple of items I didn't hear. Number one, allow the flow meters on the end of the line to measure the SRFs coming through the line, number one. Number two, the capacity in our lines that are being used by the system. I didn't hear anything about that. Who's going to be responsible for the violations on the permits, and who's going to run the pretreatment out at the harbor so that it will meet city's regulations of the pretreatment at the harbor?
Thank you.
Look into that before you accept anything.
Thank you, Ms. Scuzzo. Any other public comment? Would Eric or Ernie care to address any of those items?
Sure, I believe Mike mentioned the capacity within the existing lines. So this is a 12-inch force main that basically runs from the Harbor Pretreatment Plant to the wastewater treatment plant, so it doesn't really go through the collection system. So as far as capacity within the existing collection system, it really doesn't apply. There is going to be a flow meter installed at the slip station, so we, so we will know the exact flow that's, that's coming out of it. He also mentioned the NPDS permit. The harbor, as Ernie had mentioned, will no longer have an NPDS permit, so it will, all this sewage will run through the city's wastewater treatment plant, which is a little different than what the harbor was dealing with, whereas basically, right now, all of the sewage that came from the fish processor would just go through a screen, and then it went directly into the outfall. So it really wasn't a treatment plant anymore. At one time, they did have a treatment plant that had a DAF unit and whatnot, but that has since been removed. So, so now this sewage will actually come through the Crescent City's plant, be treated, and then be scrutinized through our NPDS permit. We don't anticipate any problems with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Mr. Black?
Yeah, the other question that Councilman Scuzzo asked was who's going to do the enforcement of the permits? And the Regional Water Quality Control Board has put a requirement on the city that we reach a deal with the county as, and clarify the very question that Mike asked. And the proposal that we're going to suggest that you make to the county is that they adopt our industrial pretreatment ordinance by reference.
Right. Didn't we discuss that about, at the first reading?
Yeah, I think it's been discussed, and we've prepared an ordinance to submit to County Council that would do just that, and then we'll have an MOU that will allow the city to enforce the industrial pretreatment ordinance in the county jurisdiction.
Thanks for that clarification, Mr. Black. Okay, so we have a motion or a partial motion?
Second.
I'll make my motion again. I'll make a motion to adopt the three-party agreement for the transfer, acceptance, and capacity allocation of a 12-inch wastewater pressure line and related facilities owned by the Crescent City Harbor District.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Yes.
Can I ask Councilwoman, our Mayor Pro Tim Murray, to amend her motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and the exhibits, and then also that this is contingent upon the final legal review by our special counsel, Harriet Steiner?
What Mr. Butler just said.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. I will pull the vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Anea?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. It's a big deal.
It's huge.
Congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you.
You can all play musical chairs now.
Yeah, we all have one chair.
Did you bring music?
I did, I can see.
So we'll move to item number 15, that's consider and/or approve an updated, I'm sorry, number 14. Consider and approve authorization to send notice of intent to withdraw from Small Cities Organized Risk Effort Joint Powers Authority, which is identified as SCORE. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor and, or Mayor Slert, members of the council, at one of our, actually probably two of our budget workshops earlier this year, and really going, I think even back as far as October of 2009, the council tasked Mr. McDonald and I with, you know, evaluating all of the different operating costs of the city and trying to identify areas where there might be significant cost savings. You'll recall that one, at one of the meetings, the mayor, at that time Mayor Shalong coined the term Butler-McDonald Incorporated, BMI, as our, as our cost-cutting firm, and one of the first things that came to my mind during that meeting was we need to really look at our insurance costs. It's been a long time since, I had no agenda, a negative agenda towards SCORE. In fact, they, I think, have given us excellent service for a long period of time, but most cities I know of right now in this era are looking at their insurance costs, liability, workers' comp, just because of the reality, the economic times that we're in. So Mr. McDonald, really over the last six months, has been doing a pretty thorough analysis of what we currently have with SCORE, what else is out there on the market, what our key questions to ask are as we evaluate what our, our different options are for workers' comp and liability insurance, and some of the related coverages. And he has discovered that there may be some very significant opportunities to save significant amounts of money by looking at one of the other municipal risk pools that are out there. And he's put together an initial report for you, which you had as part of your agenda package. He's going to come tonight and just give us a little bit of an overview of what he has found. The key thing we want to remind you all tonight is we're not asking the council to make a final decision about anything. The, the one-time sensitive decision that we have to consider is if we are going to think about, think seriously about withdrawing from SCORE, which for the public's information is the, the risk pool that we currently participate in, and SCORE is kind of a cutesy acronym, Small Cities Organized Risk Effort, we need to let them know that by way of a letter no later than December 31st, that we, that it is our intent to withdraw from SCORE. And Mr. McDonald will explain that that's not necessarily a final, final, forever decision to write that letter, but there is that time element, and this is, this being our only meeting between now and the end of the year, we needed to bring this before you. And of course, given the, the potential amount of the cost savings, we also wanted to get this in front of the council. So I think I'm going to invite Mr. McDonald out just to make any general comments that he wants to make to help kind of guide the discussion tonight, and we are recommending that you authorize me to send the notice of intent letter to withdraw from Small Cities Organized Risk Effort. And if that all goes through, the withdrawal will be effective June 30 of 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Mr. McDonald?
Hi, everybody. What Rod was telling you is correct. We basically have a one-time opportunity to pull out for the next year. We're currently covered with them through June 30th. The previous year, another city that was part of SCORE I own, they had withdrawn and went to another city and did a pretty thorough evaluation, and their city manager there, I can't remember which risk pool, but she was an executive director of a risk pool, so she was pretty knowledgeable and did a real thorough review. So I used that as my guidepost and kind of went from there, and found the two that I did get quotes from, one's called ParsAC, that's another acronym, and the other's GSRMA, got savings in the range of $145,000 to $210,000 a year. The easiest way I kind of put in there that in SCORE, we're like a big fish in a small pond. We pay a bigger percentage of the administrative shared costs, and so that's the simplest way that I can find that we'll get the exact same coverage somewhere else, but there is some more intricate details where they, they fund their contributions for these actual claims that we share in layers and then are our own in layers, and then those go to pay those back, and they have higher confidence levels, which means more money out of our pocket. We've been getting dividends back from those previous years, but it takes some time for those to come together, whereas some of these other pools try and lower their estimate down to what they think we're going to pay, and it keeps the money in our pocket today rather than paying it out and then eventually getting it back. What we're asking for today is the authorization to send out the letter. SCORE's Finance Committee that I sit on is having a meeting, I think it's Thursday of this week, and then they're having a board meeting on the 15th next week, and they're going to discuss how they can try and address this issue. We had a strategic planning meeting in October that I went to, and I was real forthright with the SCORE Board and told them that with these kind of savings, I have to look at this, so it is something... So it is something we're considering. So they were looking at some mechanisms to bring that down. If for some reason they can drop our contributions down to, you know, 100,000 to 200,000, so it's competitive with these others, it may not be a good idea for us to look on and change. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's possible. So that's kind of why we wanted to get that authorization. Rod and I would probably make that call, say, right after that SCORE Board meeting, if it looks like they're not going to make those numbers, we'll do it. Then we'll actively go out and search for a new provider. And the one thing I didn't look at was private carriers, but I think private carriers right now are undercutting the market. But the long-term approach to using a private carrier for insurance is not really going to work for us. The whole reason why SCORE was formed was, I think it was in the early 80s, they had some incredible liability payouts coming around, and some cities just couldn't even get insurance, even if they went to Lloyds of London. So they had formed together in these agencies, and they've been performing pretty well. But now it's just a matter of, do we want to hold the money or do we want to let SCORE hold it? And then, you know, divvy it back up later.
Do we have some kind of a projection, like a history versus, like a trending of what we've paid SCORE over the years?
They have a very complicated program of doing that, where they have what's called a retrospective adjustment, where they look back at the claims history. It's so confusing, it's really difficult to go into it from an overview perspective from my end. I've been working on it quite a bit, so with the data in front of me, I could probably try and explain it. Don Reynolds, who's our CPA here, was the accounting bookkeeping contractor for them. So he and I had many discussions about this because they had problems that were similar to ours when I got here, where they were way behind on their audits. But it was a lot worse because it wasn't something that once you get the books straightened out, everything just kind of rolls forward. They had a lot of other internal problems that they were working out, and they're still getting those worked out, but they've done it by spending more money. And by spending more money, we take a larger percentage of that share. And so I think this is not really anything that we're not getting services from them, it's just a matter of we're spending too much money out of our pocket right now. And that's the whole thing from my perspective.
It does seem like those fees in the past have been claim-driven?
Yeah, the way they have it, like SCORE's basic function is the first $25,000 is considered our layer. So every claim that comes up that reaches more than $25,000, that's directly out of our deposit premiums, our money. Then we share from the $25,000 range, I think it's to, it's either 150 or 250. They have different layers and different amounts in the workers' comp and the general liability program. And so those are out where they share at different pools and they buy from excess pools. And I think some of the decisions where they've made to buy this excess coverage, to get, you know, coverage up into the 30, 40, 50 million range, has been a lot higher, where if we were in a larger pool, it would be more economical to buy those things.
I wondered what our attorneys think, and do they have an opinion? Have you run it by them, per se?
I did have a conversation with Rod and Ken. Basically, at this point, my comfort level is great because this is not an irreversible decision. It's a decision we have to take now, or else we lose the opportunity for another 12 months. This just basically puts in a marker that we may be withdrawing, perhaps even says that we're likely withdrawing, but at the same time, we do have the ability to go back. And so when you see the comparative information that I'm sure staff will bring you later on, at that time, we can discuss the pros and cons. I don't know that there's a legal side, you know, a legal aspect, but I don't know that there isn't, and I'll certainly advise you at that time.
My other question is, these two other comparatives, do we know that we could be insured by them?
Yeah, they haven't taken the formal action to, you know, basically admit us to their board, but they've prepared quotes. And what I'm getting is a lot of the same information that these people share, a lot of the same data. They, when they prepared a quote, I gave them loss data, which is, you know, actual numbers, so they have a lot of information to base it on. And from that perspective, we're not really, I would say that we would be, love to be picked up by any pool that's out there.
Okay.
We're in a good situation. There's some other cities in the SCORE group that are looking, that are not quite as favorable as us. So there is the potential, if we submit this intent to withdraw, and we decide now we want to stay with SCORE, I think it takes a two-thirds vote of their board to bring us back in. But it would, I couldn't see how they wouldn't allow us back in because we're just contributing to their program. Whereas if we come back, every member's going to see a small increase in the administrative expenses that we picked up before that.
You know, I noticed that with SCORE, there's only 21 members.
Correct.
Us included. With, at least Golden, or I'm sorry, yeah, GSRMA, there's 197 members. And over the next few months, I talked with Mr. Butler this morning, but over the next few months, we're going to have the names of those members, and I'm going to personally contact some of them that I'm aware of, cities, to see how they are doing with this company, which with 197 members already tells me it's probably pretty good.
Yeah, and that one, it is, there are some caveats when we get into describing and explaining some of those. GSRMA is Golden State Risk Management Authority. It originally started out as Glen County, and it was Glen County in Orland, and I think their school district. And then they've grown and grown, so they've changed their name to pick that up. They don't have a lot, that 197 members, I think, I think it's close to 90 or more, are cemetery districts. And they join through the Cemetery District Association. So they have different types of risks. So from a risk perspective, they're well diversified, and they seem to be well in tune with cities and counties' operations and how to handle those. And, you know, we'll get into more detail with that type of stuff and probably have representatives here to give us information if we're kind of up on the fence and...
We're all for saving money.
Thank you. Did you say cemetery districts?
Yeah. And when I was talking to some of the raiders about some of this stuff, I thought, well, never have any claims with those. But they have a real high incidence of workers' comp because a lot of the operations are digging and subterranean, like a lot of our work. So there are some similarities from the workers' comp side, but probably none on the general liability side.
Okay, so I just had a few things. Obviously, you know, an overview, GSRMA looks more favorable to us. But what is an SIR?
Self-insured retention.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, there's a ton of acronyms.
And the one thing that I was concerned about with GSRMA is that it doesn't state that IRMA is included.
They, this goes back to SCORE's history, back, I think in, when they first formed, they had a lot of employment practices claims that their board couldn't handle and didn't cover at all. They specifically excluded them. So they joined, they joined IRMA, and not all SCORE members are part of IRMA, we are, but that's in order to give that risk coverage in there. Whereas in GSRMA's general liability, they cover that. So they may be more, they'll give more training, they may be more involved in those type of employment practices thing because they administer all the general liability and the employment claims, and the flood insurance also, which those are flood insurance and employment practices, IRMA, those two, we have to get on outside sources.
Okay. And I was very happy to see, but was curious as to why they would have absolutely no retention or deductible?
Yeah, that was a shock to me, too. And what I was told is that because they do, they don't hire any consultants, contractors, they work, they have their own agency in their own office. So they hire them from the beginning, and they treat every claim, you know, with the opinion that they're trying to reduce the cost to the pool and to the entity itself. Whereas their explanation to me, I haven't been able to, you know, verify it, but they were saying that when there's a consultant involved, they're going to do some things that might necessarily not be in our best interest, but maybe in the consultant's best interest.
And then under other programs, I noticed some of the health, dental, vision, liability, that kind of stuff is something they also offer, and I'm sure they would want that business from us. But I just wanted to state that I know that we do some local business in that area, and I'd like to make sure that we stay local if we can.
Our health benefits, too, are negotiated through our MOUs with our employee bargaining units. So we've had a lot of people offering those. SCORE through Alliant offers those same type of programs, but they haven't really been able to fit in with anything. So I don't really see any changes coming through on the benefit side. Although they will have these open, but because of the restrictiveness of PERS for the healthcare, it's pretty hard to really work that in.
For ParsAC withdrawal penalties, it says that if you withdraw early, that there are, that you forfeit your equity? And what does that mean?
They, they count, they are a risk-sharing pool, so all those entities in there together share in those risks. So as they, you know, say, just a simple example, we put $100 in for our deposit premiums. After all our expenses and our claim payout, we've only paid out $70. So there's $30 that's left over in the pool. That's kind of like our equity, and that kind of functions how SCORE does and where we get dividends back based on those. But SCORE just has a lot more complex method of how they calculate and return it, whereas some of these others. And some of the drawbacks with both ParsAC and GSRMA is you're not an active governing member of the board, where I'm one of 20 members as the SCORE representative, that I have to vote and take actions. Really, from my own selfish perspective, I have to put in a lot more time and effort with SCORE than I probably would with ParsAC or GSRMA.
That was my next question.
From a selfish time perspective, it's, you know, a little better for me. I'm not really sure at this point in time what the long-term implication is.
I was just curious why GSRMA would not have an executive committee or membership?
Well, if you go into, like, page two of three in the little analysis over on...
That's where I'm at.
Yeah, how it says officials, two Glen County supervisors, one from Orland City Council. Their original makeup, that's kind of how they got that board makeup, and that's their governing board, and they run for that. We would be one of, I'm not sure how many, but that one board member is what we could be up for. I'm thinking that as GSRMA goes and gets more and more members in, they may weight the membership or the voting rights on the board. That's one of the issues that I have with SCORE. We're about a 15% to 20% of putting up the money and basically handling the risk in SCORE, but we only get 1/21st of, you know, one vote out of the 21. So theoretically, SCORE could have the 10 smallest cities with, you know, maybe under 1,500 population, making decisions and dictating what we're going to do. And I saw that happen when I first joined the SCORE Board. It was two years ago, last June, they passed an EAP program that we already had. We ended up paying $2,000 or $3,000 for this a year for a redundant program that didn't do us any good. It took me two years of fighting, and everybody knows I'm not usually the one to stay quiet, until they finally dropped it and made it where whoever participates in it pays it. I mean, it was a lot of work and time, you know, to save 2,000 bucks, but it was just a rock in my shoe that I didn't think was fair. And there are some of those kind of things in some of the other pools that, you know, over time, they could change those types of situations.
That's just something I would want more information about, and how their board actually, what their background is, maybe.
Yeah, and some of the stuff like Rich was talking about, contacting some of the other members, that is, would be a tremendous help for me because the more information and the more, you know, unbiased outside help you can get, I think the better informed you'll be.
Yeah. My other, I just had two other things, and one was, what is a member considered? I mean, how do they define a member?
Well, like in GSRMA, they have 197, I think.
Right.
I think they're...
ParsAC only has 36, so I was just curious what they, how they define their membership.
Like ParsAC, I think they're mostly cities. I don't know if they have any counties, but they're going to be smaller entities, whereas, you know, like with GSRMA, they're going to have a lot of small school districts and a real wide diverse makeup of who their members are. But every entity, like I noticed one that they had on there was Calusa First Five, and I think we have a first five here in town. So they basically offer membership to fire districts and different things like that, too.
Okay. And the last thing was loss control budget, $136,000 for ParsAC. What does that mean?
That's the amount of money they budget per year to give training and loss control, basically preventative-type things to prevent losses in the agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Most of all those agencies are going to do that.
When I hear loss control, it's, I was thinking...
The inventory.
They only have $136,000 to cover their losses? That's not going to work.
Just the training for losses.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Ms. McDonald, thanks a lot. That's good information. And I just have to say that I really applaud Mr. Butler and yourself for doing this proactive leadership to save the taxpayers $145,000 to $210,000 is a very big deal. We've been with SCORE for 17 years, but the benefits seem to be that it's a substantial cost savings, there's a three-year commitment, and apparently no rate increases for those three years. So, I mean, that sounds very positive, especially in these economic times. One question I did want to clarify is, we have some legal issues that the city's dealing with currently with SCORE. It's true that there's no impact on the defense of those cases if we were to propose to change horses?
Yeah, what happens is we'll still have money and funds on deposit, basically being held by SCORE to deal with all current claims through June 30th.
What about IRMA, though? If, for instance, we were to choose GSMA?
IRMA, if IRMA was processing any cases through June 30th, they would complete them. If, say, an employment practices case happened on July 1, then it would fall to whoever our cover, coverage was on that date. But if it happened on, say, June 30th, it would be SCORE, IRMA, or whoever the responsible...
I think we'd just feel comfortable with a little more clarification, because what if the current extends past June 30th?
Well, where there's going to be clarification needed and where Bob is going to get involved is they have, like, I think it's workers' comp, it's when the actual accident happened. So if that accident happened on June 30th, it would be our SCORE carrier. With general liability, it's when it happens, but when it's, it's also when you know about it. So a claim may have happened on June 30th, but you may not know about it until September 30th. That's some of the details that we'll have to work out with whichever carriers we're looking at to make sure that we've got complete coverage, and there's not going to be any fighting about who's doing what and where.
Yeah, because this council is very proactive with those, and we want to make sure that we are not going to have any gap or any kind of a hiccup in that defense.
Yeah, and that's, when we get into the specific carrier, then that's definitely going to be something where Bob's going to be doing a lot more research, detailed work to make sure that that's the case.
Very good.
Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
Thanks so much. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion and/or action.
At this point, I feel a little more comfortable about approving the authorization to send a notice of intent to withdraw from SCORE, and that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, pull the vote, please.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item number 15. We'll consider and/or approve an updated, an extended city manager employment agreement. Does Mr. Black want to address this, or Mr. Butler?
Yes, since this directly involves me, I've asked Mr. Black to take the lead.
Yes, Mayor, your council has, gave direction to me to draft a contract extending Mr. Butler's tenure in office and also adjusting his compensation to some extent, and the terms of his departure from the city, should that occur, to provide for some portion of severance. There are a couple of changes to the agreement before you that I would like to, I would like you to reflect in the written document. On page three, the $7,500 compensation, I inadvertently divided that between the Crescent City Housing Authority and the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And I believe it was your intent that that $7,500 would come solely from the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, so that change should be made there. And then at the top of page four, the very, the first paragraph on page four, which deals with future negotiations, should simply be stricken. That doesn't belong there. Other than that, I can tell you that I have approved the agreement as to form. I believe it reflects, well, 90% of it, or 95% are provisions that carry forward from his existing contract, and all changes in terms, I believe, reflect the intent of your council.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Black. Is there any questions by the council? Okay, no questions. Any public comment? Okay, no questions, uh, any public comment? No public comment, back to the council.
Uh, well, I'll just, uh, move forward with this, because I was on the ad hoc committee that introduced this to the council. Um, I'm extremely pleased with the performance of our city manager, as I think, uh, I've not only heard from the rest of the council, but also from the department heads at the city. There's an extreme level of confidence, um, which is a new era in the city of Crescent City, uh, for the leadership abilities, the proactiveness of our city manager, um, his ability to work with all of our city staff in a positive environment, um, and the fact that he has been willing to take on a new role, uh, that's not previously been handled, um, as, um, aggressively by the city manager in the past, which is within our redevelopment agency. This council chose to make RDA, uh, a priority over the next five years, and as I mentioned earlier, it's going to entail a lot more work, um, on the part of our city manager. Um, we are extremely pleased that he has decided to continue to stay with us in our little city, little city by the city. Um, he comes from far away and has family, um, uh, down in Southern California, so, um, it's been a little bit of a hardship for him, uh, to part ways, uh, but I think he's, uh, felt like he's found a, uh, a home here, and I think, at least for the immediate future, he, uh, is extremely, uh, product, has been extremely productive, and I think is going to just keep moving us forward. I think for those of you that follow city business, over the past four years, we have made more leaps and bounds within our city than I think we've done in, in quite some time. And we're working diligently on economic development, on redevelopment, where we have projects for, to meet our state's low-income housing needs. And although I didn't approve that, um, item earlier, it's because I don't, I, it's not that I don't approve the concept, I just don't approve the way it was presented, so. Um, but I think that, um, the fact that he has, um, agreed to stay with us for an additional three years is, uh, one more step forward for our city. So, I would be honored to, uh, approve this agreement tonight, uh, for Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a second.
Any comments?
Oh, no.
Okay, I, I'd just like to offer that Rod has brought, um, professionalism in his leadership to the city, uh, and I see it, uh, being respected through, throughout the city. Uh, I also appreciate his commitment that he's made to us, um, and, uh, I think, uh, us making a, uh, similar commitment is equally important. Uh, I, I feel we have a strong city team in place from a management standpoint. Uh, uh, it's reasonable and it's a win-win, so, uh, very nice job. Thank you. So, uh, is there a public comment on this issue?
You already took it.
A public comment, okay. So, we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Okay, uh, pull the vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes, so that's unanimous, uh, four to zero.
Get your signature in blood, Mr. Butler.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, item sixteen, consider and discuss changes to the public comment procedures as recommended by Councilmember Aneah. Uh, Mr. Aneah, would you like to address this?
Yes, just a, just a few comments and other cities that, that I've, uh, lived in. You know, I, I wanted to suggest a, uh, a speaker card, and I know I put printed name and address, the address could be city or county, doesn't have to be an address, and that'd be given to the city clerk so she has the correct spelling of people's names. And they can also write down what item number they wanna talk about. So, if they've come to talk about item eighteen and they don't wanna wait three hours, they could speak at the beginning of the meeting on that item, even though it hasn't come up yet, whether it's on or off the agenda. Some people come from work, they've been here, you know, for a long day and they wanna speak about it for something, and that'll give them the chance to speak about, about that item like that. Some of the other considerations, um, when we're doing our regular business, that, I think that that's the continuing business, that should be, uh, a one-three-minute period that someone can bring up. And unless it, unless it has nu- new information provided by a department head or the city manager, but if it's just regular business, like approving our consent calendar, for example, or approving our resolutions that we've already read, that can be all tied into one. Now, tonight, we had a couple of reports, so that would be new. And like I put, their redevelopment and housing and new business could all be new. But I'm talking about the, at the beginning of the meeting, having public comment to give the people an opportunity to speak. Uh, they might wanna talk about an item that's way down the list and don't wanna stay. Or they may not wanna talk about an item, they may wanna just put their name and say on that, "I support item number seventeen." So, we would get an idea of people that come to the meetings. It's just a way to streamline it a little bit, to make it more efficient than I've seen in other cities. And we can, we can work with that, it doesn't have to be set in stone. There may be an item that generates a lot of things, and new items come up during the meeting that you may wanna reopen, public comment. It's just, it's just a way to, to, uh, the flow of the meeting. And it's, it's just a suggestion.
Any other comments, input?
Go ahead.
I, I like the idea, because, um, sometimes, you know, we have one person that talks about every single item, and it can take up like forty minutes of public comment. And if we have, if we have it broken up into, like you suggest, two or three opportunities to talk, and, um, it could, um, you could put in your card, and it could be in the order of how you submit your card to our city clerk. And, um, Mr. Longsdale submitted a letter, um, with some of his concerns, but I think we can iron out, um, his concerns, and, uh, one of them was not, not revealing your address. Um, and, um, include the item of which you want to discuss. And, um, I've been to other, um, public comment periods, such as College of the Redwoods, where, um, not everyone's even allowed to, um, have an opportunity to speak. It's a little bit too controlling, and, um, I went to their board of trustees meeting one time, and so many people are allowed to speak and that's it. And so, I mean, I, I think that, uh, we need to have, um, a sensible time. I mean, here it is, nine o'clock, and we're still not done, and we haven't even had that many people speak tonight. So, um, I, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable compromise so that everyone has the opportunity to at least have a little bit of a time to talk about what they want. But, you know, even saying, yes or no, I like this idea or I don't, and, and boom, you're out. And so, I like, I like, um, Councilmember Aneah's suggestion. And we, and I think we can iron it out, the more people that wanna make a few more comments and let us work on this, I think it's a good idea.
Ms. Shalung?
Um, I, I agree that our public comment process needs to be, um, revised, uh, to be more user-friendly, uh, for both the council and, and the public. Um, I don't think I agree with, uh, the way that Mr. Aneah's, um, presentation was made in our agenda, and it sounds to me like he's changed his mind a little bit. Um, and I, I caution the wording that he just used, um, and we can, you know, have public comment for this or that, and then, and then if something else comes up or there's new information, we can open up public comment again, because I think that's gonna become very confusing for not only the mayor to run the meeting, but for the, the audience to know when they're allowed and when they're not allowed to speak. And then Mr. Longsdale referred to impromptu public comment. We don't have impromptu public comment, except for those people that are out of order. Um, and so, um, what I suggested to Mayor Slert, uh, right, and right after he, well, I think it was the same week that he was, um, selected, was to, instead of having public comment on every single item throughout the night, to have three different public comment periods. One would be a general public comment period, and that would be up to the mayor as to whether he wanted that in the very beginning of the meeting or, or the end. And then have a general public comment on continuing business and new business. So, let's say there's three items for continuing business, and they're, you know, it's old news, it's just stuff that we're continuing to discuss. You have three minutes to discuss anything that's on continuing business. For new business, you have three minutes to discuss any item on continue, uh, on new business, but not on every single item. And then for general public comment, if you didn't have enough time in those two times, then you have ma- three to five minutes for general public comment. That way, everybody has a, a maximum of eleven minutes.
And I would agree to that. You said it much more eloquently than I did, which would include also redevelopment to be separate along with housing authority.
I think redevelopment and housing, uh, are separate issues. We oftentimes, uh, don't have many agenda items, so it hasn't been an issue. But I think that as we, as progressive as we're going to become in those two areas, I think it's something that needs to be considered as well.
Yes, I agree with that.
But I, I don't like the idea of just having one comment period and you're done, because that really, because, for instance, I mean, there are, there's, you know, I don't mind hearing somebody that has a different opinion than me, it's the, when they get disrespectful and out of order that we have the problems. Um, that's what we need to fix. Um, but I actually enjoy taking both sides of the issue and hearing from the public so that I can make, I, I, it helps me make my decision. Um, we showed that when we had our town hall meetings, taking that public input and actually coming to, as far as we've come with, uh, implementing that information is what we are, that's why we're here. So, I don't wanna take public comment away from people, but I want to, I think it needs to be administered better. I didn't do a very good job of that as mayor. People were out of control, negative, yelling, calling people names, and, uh, it, we need to handle that in a much more effective manner.
I think the three is a good idea. I had two, I had the, the regular general comment, and I also had public hearings.
And I also liked, um, in your information, the rules of decorum, I think that needs to be provided-
Yes.
-to the council, I mean, to the public, on the agenda, whatever we decide that is. Um, because, you know, it says right here, if you, you know, disrupt a meeting and are completely out of order and calling people names, you're subject to a misdemeanor. If that's the case, you know, people need to know that.
That's true.
Thank you. So, I think this is a, a good, uh, dialogue, and I think it's timely, and I think it is offered in the spirit of, uh, trying to avoid the circus-like atmosphere that we've had, uh, um, over the past. I remember when I was, mm, attending council meetings back in the old days of oh-four and oh-five and oh-six, uh, it was at the cultural center, and it was a whole di- different atmosphere, and, uh, there wasn't the hostility, I think, that has evolved in the last, uh, year or two. Uh, so I think it is offered in that spirit.
He knows the most of his meetings.
Yeah. Um, but, but, um, I guess, uh, I, I also like the idea of having the decorum identified right in the agenda, so that everybody's on the same page. Um, that, my, my one concern is, um, many times when, uh, staff is making a report, that's when you really kind of hear the beef of the issue-
Mm-hmm.
-uh, from, from the city manager or the staff, and, uh, to, uh, then have a dialogue or questions by the council, I think is all important, uh, information that may in fact affect people's opinions or input. So, that would be my only concern.
That is a concern.
Yeah. So, we'll open it up for, uh, public comment?
Thank you very much for, uh, engaging what I, what I had started earlier. Um, this is exactly what I'm looking for. One of the things that I've-
Say your name.
Yes. Oh, excuse me. My name, Jamie Yarborough, resident of the, of the county, waiting to become a resident of the city when you expand the city limits. Um, but I, I, one of the concerns that I'm hearing i- is the constraint of time and, and being able to accommodate all the different voices from all the different, uh, voices that might be out there, pro and con, plus or minus. And I would like to suggest a, a way to alleviate that, and that comes from our, our new member, Mr. Fritz over here, and enabling people to enter a lot of that information, whether they're here or not, on the internet. When you start expanding that table out there, there are some people that, you know, like movie stars, they have a fan base, thousands, if not millions, they can't get to every email of, of, please, you know, send me a, an autographed napkin or something. They can't do that. But even if you have a, a number of people emailing each member of the council or each member of the board of supervisors with their feelings about an issue that comes up in a meeting prior to it being, uh, voted upon, then you're gonna have a little more of a flavor of what the community wants and needs without having to put them through the, the gauntlet of standing up and, and public speaking. It's just an idea. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comment? Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, Eileen Cooper. I, um, I hope that the, um, the public comment period, I guess you mean that they'll have a section of time at the very beginning of the meeting, 'cause I know I always see people jumping up about three times, not knowing which section is the real, um, public comment period. So, if it, if there is, uh, uh, about one place, um, where people know, no matter where on the agenda it falls, they, they, at the beginning of the meeting sometime, they can come up and, and speak, that would be nice. And also about the information, like, I mi- I might have missed that this was even on the agenda, not having the time to, um, you know, come down and read the postings or missing my paper, um, but that, um, on the internet, I know the, the ca- the county, they have their, um, agenda posted, and then they have even all the attached information that somebody can access to that item. And I, I-
So do we, Ms. Cooper.
So, that's, um, the, the more informed, you know, the public can be ahead of time, um, the better their input and, um, more relevant, you know, and, and help make good decisions. So, and, you know, they can write something substantial if they know it's coming up ahead of time. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
That's what I came for tonight.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, and the members of the city council, for the record, my name is Mike Scavizo. I reside in the city of Crescent City. Uh, to answer her comment, it is on the website, and it is under the package and agenda. If you hit it, you go on the website and hit it, and you get all the information, so. But I'm here to talk about this item sixteen, which you have in front of you, several cities, and out of the several cities that was presented, only two of them require this card. But the main one I'm really concerned with was West Covina. If you look at page two, and the statements of swearing in their people to talk and use a card to be able to present their comments, is actually a violation of the Brown Act, and I'll cite the comments to you here very shortly. And then four oh-three, which is erroneously causing, telling that this is a violation of Penal Code three oh-three. Three oh-three has to do with alcohol beverages, unless these guys are being drunk at the meeting and being disorderly. And I'll really briefly read you the comments of three oh-three, which I have here in front of me. Three oh-three, it should be unlawful for any- 303, "It should be unlawful for any person to engage in the sale of alcohol beverages other than the original package to employ upon the premise." That's enough. If you want to go check it out, you can look at it yourself. And then they talk about the 1797 Health and Safety Code. That has to do with emergency EMTs, has nothing to do with public officials, has nothing to do with peace officers. And the last, but the least one is the Election Code of 18340 about elected officials. And that stretching it a little bit there and finding out what causes a disruption of a meeting, putting a gun to somebody's head or something like that. So basically, what I'm trying to explain to you, that, uh, under the Constitution, which you all took an oath of office when you came into office, to support and defend the Constitution, Article One says freedom of speech. You can go and read that yourself. But mainly, section 5495, 3.3 says, "A member of the public shall not be required as a condition to attend at a meeting," if I can have, just to finish this up. May I?
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Okay. "A meeting or legislative body of a local agency to register his or her name to provide other information to complete a questionnaire or others to fulfill any condition present to his or her attendance. It is the attendance list, register, questionnaire, or other similar documents is posted near interest to the room to allow them to be held. It is circulated to the person, so on and so forth." But it says there definitely that it is not required to be part of the meeting. The person has the freedom of speech. Now, if you really want to do something, there are other cities that have what they call sunset law. And you go take it and your attorney can look at it, it's a sunset ordinance, what clarifies and opens it up more like council member Shaila Wang said, to allow more people to present it. I've had people call me up and that's the reason why I came down for this thing tonight. And I know what I'm talking about. Mr. Black, your attorney will tell you, I've had dealings with the legislators, I had legislation passed. I know what I'm talking about. So, if you guys continue to do that, you're going to have problems. So, you want to be open. You want, you want to be able to do it. To put cards out there and block people, that tells them, no way.
Thank you, Mr. Scavizo.
You want attendance. You don't want people to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Seeing no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the city council. Discussion, action, thoughts?
Well, I think we ought to still pursue the, um, we can take away the speaker cards for now. I'll have to read that section, but I know cities that do it all the time. You don't have to put an address on there. The name is for clarification for the, uh, for the clerk. But as far as, uh, the public comment period and, and speaking at certain, at different types of the meeting, I think we ought to pursue that and come up with some ideas.
Yeah, I think we, I thi- I think it's a good idea. We just, um, maybe get a little bit better format and bring it back, back to, back to the council again. And, um, I, I don't believe it is illegal. I, if we could just get some clarification from Mr. Black.
I mean, I'd be willing to-
What's illegal?
What's illegal?
What part?
Having you write a, your name on a card.
Oh, no. No, that's not-
No, it's not illegal.
The, the law says you can't require a person to disclose their-
Their address.
-name and address as a condition of attending the meeting.
Right.
So, everybody comes in, nobody's excluded from attendance.
Nobody's forced to write their name.
I think you, quite honestly, as I read the Brown Act, I think it's legal to ask people to give you their address, but I don't think that's necessary.
It has to be reported out to the-
I think all you're, all you're interested in knowing is whether the speaker is a resident of the city-
Or a county.
-or, or, or lives outside the city.
Right.
Um, and, and their name, which helps you clarify the record, uh, helps the clerk prepare the minutes.
Exactly.
So, I would, I would, uh, think that if your, if your program of action is to create a speaker card system, number one. Number two, put public comment in three places on the agenda and at least experiment with that and see how it works out with a general public comment at the beginning and then comment on continuing business items, comment on new business items. Um, I think that that definitely can be done. Um, the other thing I, I want to emphasize, uh, as I have done in the past, is that there's nothing magic about three minutes. There's nothing magic that every public comment has to go for three minutes. Some public comments, some public hearings, five minutes might be appropriate. Uh, other public comments, given the nature of the item, one minute might be appropriate. And, uh, I think if, if your mayor, um, got into a, a rhythm of saying, you know, we're gonna, this is a one-minute item, a two-minute item, a three-minute item, uh, I think that would also work. I'm not saying it has to be done, but that, that would also work and, uh, would help the meetings move along.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to quit, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I personally don't prefer the speaker card. Um, and, and the reason, and maybe it's just because I, I can't really visualize how it would work. Um, but you may have somebody that comes in and, and doesn't fill one out because they don't think they're going to speak, but then as the meeting progresses, they have information they want to share and yet it might be too late to fill out the speaker card. So, maybe i- if you want to pursue that, I'd just like more information on how that, how it actually works.
I mean, I will, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to ma- meet with, uh, Mr. Black to talk about the public comment part. I think we do offer a lot of comment and, uh, when you have, uh, cities and other entities that allow 30 minutes and if you don't get your, if you don't get to speak in that time, you don't get to speak at all. We've never done that. We've always allowed the public to-
We're user-friendly here in Crescent City.
Yes, we are. But anyway, I'd, I'd be willing to meet with the city attorney to talk about that.
Good. So, would the council agree with that to have Mr. Inea huddle with Mr. Black and Mr. Butler and then maybe come back with a sample or two of a couple of options?
Fine with me.
Very good. I think it was, uh, timely and a good dialogue. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 17. Uh, receive the 2010, 2011 council member committee commissions board appointments. Um, it's in your binder and this is, um, I guess I would off, this is a first draft, uh, hopefully with not a lot of tickling in, uh, required, but, uh, we've got committees and meetings to be getting to, uh, and to make sure the bases are covered. So, is there any particular comment?
Just the ones that I had sent to you.
And that, that seemed reasonable.
Yeah, um, Pelican Bay Recycling Task Force, which I started, I didn't start the task force, but I started the committee, no longer exists, um, so that can be stricken. Um, the, I, in the past, was the delegate for the League of Cities and for the Redwood Empire Division. Um, sometimes they will meet at the same time, so it's, it may be something to consider cause it might be easier for one person to do both if, uh, if they're, if that makes it easier on travel, um, as far as being able to attend the meetings if it's the same person. And then I just, um, would prefer to be the alternate, uh, entree agency and would like to pass that seat along to, um, Catherine.
Okay.
If she's interested.
Mayor, the Pelican Bay group that you mentioned, is that the recycling task force?
Yeah.
That's no more?
No more.
Um, the other comment that I would like is, um, that we update the times and, uh, dates for the meetings. I think some of them are a little bit outdated.
Okay.
And- Um, in the past, the clerk, um, has confirmed all of that information.
The, another group that doesn't meet anymore that I'm assigned to, the Boys and Girls Club, that doesn't exist anymore.
They actually do exist and, yeah. And Holly, uh, has been working on, I believe, putting a new group of people together.
It's not called the Boys and Girls Club though, right?
I, I, to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure. I just know that she gave me her card not too long ago and said that she would be looking for the city's support.
You know what? I'll check with her and see if we have a board.
Yeah.
I think they're running out of first five. I think it was called something else. Okay.
I'm not sure.
All right.
So, you want, want to switch and be the alternate for the agency? Is that what you're saying?
That's what she, uh, offered, yeah.
So, the local transportation committee meets this, um, Thursday, but it meets at four o'clock.
At four.
Cause I'll be there then. Do you want that to start this week?
Yes. Unless there's something that comes up, then I'll have the office, uh, city office notify. Great, great. Alrighty, thank you. And then, uh, item number 18, uh, consider and approve the city council meeting calendar for 2011. Mr. Butler?
Yes, Mayor Slert and members of the council, you know, we've reached the end of another year when we consider this item, which looks ahead at the calendar for the next year. Keep in mind that, uh, part of your action last year at this time was to cancel the December 20th meeting. So, unless, you know, it's some, uh, major reason that we need to meet between now and the end of the year, this is it for 2010. But we've gone ahead and proposed a calendar for you for 2011. We have some of the typical Monday holiday conflicts that we run into because of the fact that we meet on the first and third Mondays. So, in January, February, July, and September, we have, uh, conflicts caused by Monday holidays. And then the plan at this point is to meet on the day after each of those Monday holidays, uh, Tuesday. I do have an email out to Rich Young of the Harbor District last, this year, they graciously allowed us to use the facilities we're in now, uh, where there was a conflict between our Tuesday rescheduled meeting and the Harbors meeting. And I don't think I've heard back from Richard yet, so, um, I'll give him a nag. I may even see him tomorrow night. So, uh, I'll see if they're willing to do that, be gracious enough to do that again for us this year. But I think there's really nothing else except that we are recommending canceling the second meeting of December again next year in 2011. Other than that, it's, uh, pretty much a carbon copy of the calendar we have this year. And of course, you know, throughout the year, we may have some workshops, uh, special meetings as needed. But our recommendation is, uh, that you go ahead and approve the meeting calendar for 2011 as presented.
I would just, um, make one comment and that is to leave the second December meeting on. Um, oftentimes, uh, there may be business that needs to be conducted and it's easier to take it off of your schedule, like come November, than to not plan on it at all because then you would have to call a special meeting, I, I think. Just something to consider.
Any other thoughts? And to me, this is, uh, reasonable and acceptable and I'd be happy to support it. Would that be a directive of the council?
To support it without the December meeting?
Yeah.
And so, if there's city business that needs to be done, you'll-
Call a special-
-call a special meeting and-
Well, this is just a calendar though, isn't it? If we get into November and we need that meeting, we can just calendar it. We're not, that, this is just a calendar. Right? Cause we meet the first and third Monday, right? So, we can call it in November, we can call a second meeting.
I mean, we have enough advance notice, we wouldn't have to make a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
It wouldn't have to be a special, cause it wouldn't have to be a special, cause we have enough time to make it calendared. So, is there a motion?
Just a directive, I think.
Yeah.
You need a motion?
Motion for approval?
Yeah, I would like to have the, I'd like to have the calendar approved.
I'll second that because, I'll second that on discussion because some of those meetings are moved to a Tuesday.
Okay.
So, we can have that in our calendar.
A motion is second. Uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Dis opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Um, did we, uh, legislative matters? Mr. Butler?
Yes, Mayor Slert and members of the council, we've had, uh, an interesting item come up, uh, in the past week or so that we wanted to at least get some council input on. Uh, those of you that follow Humboldt County politics know that longtime county supervisor Bonnie Neely did not win reelection. Uh, Virginia Bass, uh, won that election. And that, uh, is going to create a vacancy on the Coastal Commission for the representation of the North Coast, which in this context means Mendocino County, Humboldt County, and Del Norte County. A process is in the works now to locate nominees to fill that vacant Coastal Commission North Coast representative spot. Uh, Jay Serena actually, well, I'll back up, there's a letter from the governor's office in your packet. I don't, we don't have any record of having received this at the, at the city, but the county received one and-
I don't have any record of receiving a letter that's addressed to myself.
Well, we got the one from, uh, Mark Lovelace, Supervisor Lovelace, did come directly to City Hall to your attention. But the letter from the governor's office that outlines the selection process, uh, to our knowledge, hasn't arrived at the city yet, but did go to the county. Jay Serena, county CAO, contacted me and just asked the general question as far as what the council's intent on this appointment would be. The board of supervisors is going to be meeting on, a week from tomorrow, the 14th, and discussing the possibility of nominating a member of the board of supervisors from Del Norte County to be considered. You also have the letter from, uh, Humboldt County Supervisor Mark Lovelace, who's requesting an endorsement for his candidacy for the appointment.
Does it only go through the board of supervisors?
That's, uh, something that I'm going to ask Mr. Blatt to comment on if he knows anything about the process. I contacted the governor's office today, uh, appointments office, and talked to someone that, uh, gave me a little bit more information. My question was, when you have an appointment like this, because they make reference to, we want one city council member and one board of supervisors at least. And my question was, does that mean one from all three counties combined? Or does that mean one from each county? And the response from the person I talked to was, you can interpret it either way based on looking at what the Public Resources Code says. And then she cited a, a section from the Public Resources Code.
You know, after, you know, after reading, uh, Time Standard about all the fighting in Humboldt to be, for this position, no one from Del Norte County's ever served and I was considering it. But I would vote to dissolve them on my first meeting with the Coastal Commission, so I'd probably get-
I would second that.
Well, it's not going to happen. We know that-
But it's, it's interesting that we weren't even-
I guess you're not going to be appointed then.
It's interesting that we weren't even talked about in Del Norte County, that it's all been Humboldt and they seem to think that they have the person or persons to do it. It's locked up and I think that's very selfish.
That's insulting. That's insulting and-
I think we have several-
Well, I think that their, I think that their newspaper would talk about their, uh, nominees. Why would they talk about anybody from here when we haven't nominated anybody?
Yeah. It came, sort of came at the last minute here.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it seems like it should be Del Norte County's turn to have representation because we never had the opportunity.
And I think, again, there's some, some vagueness about the way the process works, but I think we have at least a couple of options. One would be to write a letter of support for whoever the nominee from the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors is on that argument that it's time for Del Norte to represent the North Coast.
And I, 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 I think that's the wisest thing to do, so that we put up a united front.
Did Jerry say anything?
Have not talked to Jerry. I just had a quick conversation with Jay Serena last week and they are going to discuss it at their regular board meeting a week from tomorrow. And they, I think it's their plan to come out of that meeting with-
A nominee.
-having identified a nominee.
I would support that we do that. I think that we should, um, put up a united front and support whoever the board of supervisors nominates.
You mean like in a letter form of support?
Absolutely. And, and, and I think it's our turn to have somebody represent Del Norte County and have a Del Norte County person be appointed.
I agree.
As opposed to, I mean, uh, we've had people from Humboldt County, um, be appointed and, and I don't think that they've done fair representation for us. And I think that having someone from the board of supervisors, um, represent us would be our best, best, most viable option for appointment. No offense to the city council, but I think that a board of supervisors appointment or, um, nominee would have more clout than the city council.
Especially since the city council wants to blow up the Coastal Commission.
I said dissolve it. Dissolve it.
Dissolve it.
Yeah. I just, I just think that we'd have a- I just, I just think that we'd have a better chance if we put up a united front.
I agree. I think there's a benefit of, and, you know, my personal preference would be that we had a representative from Del Norte County representing our community instead of somebody else from Mendocino or Humboldt, suggesting that they'll represent us. So I would be in favor of offering the council, if it's our wish collectively, to offer a letter of support to the Board of Supervisors, whoever that nominee might be.
Instead of splitting, splitting the nominees, have one, one person be representing, backing the county supervisors nomination.
Do you know that they're going to nominate somebody?
I'm sure they will. I, I know, I've spoken before to Supervisor Sullivan and Supervisor McClure, both, and they've echoed that sentiment, and I believe even Supervisor Hemmingson at one time, so all three of them. I don't know if I've ever spoken to Supervisor Finnegan or McNamara, but I know I've spoken to the other two.
I was told that Supervisor Finnegan and Supervisor Sullivan have submitted their applications.
Good. Great, that's good news. Good, this is a-
A letter and fill in the name?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll let them fill in the name, we just, we're supporting whoever they nominate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Butler. So we'll move to reports. Ms. Shalopp?
A very quiet couple of weeks, but have Thursday interviews set up for the airport for the project construction company to be considered, so that's pretty exciting. Maybe there's three firms that will be interviewing, and I think that's going to be a huge step in our transportation issues. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, doesn't sound right. Mr. Ania?
I just wanted to say again that I've been pointed to the League California Cities Policy Committee for Transportation, Communication, and Public Works, so if we have any ideas with that, I'd be glad to hear them. My first meeting will be next month. And since I'm on the local transportation commission, I'm going to bring their ideas to, maybe we can do something with the airport, for some state funding.
My, my experience with those policy committees is that they really haven't done much.
No, I know.
And, did you submit your application?
Yes, yes. I actually wanted public safety, but it's the closest they could get.
Yeah, I told them no thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Let's see, in November, I attended our Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting where we appointed Mr. Renfro to the Visitors Bureau Board, which is, welcome Mr. Renfro to that, and the Arts Walk.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was a lot of fun, and just a little quick announcement, it's nearly Christmas time, so seasons greetings to everyone, and with that, Rural Human Services is doing their Santa's workshop, and donations are coming in, but they're always greatly accepted, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, I actually have a laundry list.
Imagine that.
I attended the Christmas light parade, and I think it was actually hugely successful given the weather. It was pretty cold and stormy, and I thought it was a very good turnout, and I would say that the indication is bit is a lie, based on people's response. And to see the look in the kids' eyes was very good, and, you know, I had passerbyers just walk down the street and ask me if I was Charles Slur, and I said yes, and they said, "Thank you for the good job that you're doing in the city," so that was nice. I also attended the art walk, and it was successful given the weather conditions, attended a tri-agency meeting, I met with the harbor president, I went to the harbor commission and pledged our continued support and working relationship from the council to the harbor. I had a pleasure to have an interview with Mr. Renfro for a short interview on NPR, which I never heard, but I heard good things about it, talking about goals and objectives for the next year. Did some additional consulting for our city with Mr. Barnes of the wastewater treatment plant regarding the interiors, my gift to the city. And then I attended the bid meeting with Mr. Butler on this last Thursday, and then attended the Lighthouse Community Center ribbon cutting and grand opening ceremony last Thursday evening. And then Ms. Murray and I attended LAFCO today. Other than that, we haven't been very busy, so I have an all-new respect for the mayor responsibilities, and I salute you again, Ms. Shalopp. And since this is our only meeting, I would extend my wishes on behalf of the council and the city, to the staff and the citizens, for a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Remember, a closed session.
That's right, so we, we will end the regular council meeting and adjourn to closed session again. Thank you.